I want to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for the town of Los Gatos for Wednesday, September 23, 2015. Mr. Paulson, can you call the roll?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Commissioner Kane?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Vice Chair Birch? Or, sorry, Vice Chair Badami?
I'm here.
Chair Birch.
I am also here. Could you all please stand and join Commissioner Talisfor in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Do we have any written continuances or communications this evening?
We do. There is a desk item for item number two and a desk item for item number five.
Have all commissioners had a chance to read the desk items? Great. All right. Do we have any requested continuances this evening?
We do not.
Okay. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members also serve on other committees for the town. Do we have any reports this evening? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Earlier this afternoon, we, the Historic Preservation Committee, met and we considered four items. 140 Foster Road, which was a modification to a building, and that had quite a bit of discussion. But ultimately, the request somewhat modified was approved. The other three items, 14333 Mulberry Drive, 209 Prospect, well, the other two at least, were to remove those houses from the historic resources inventory. Both were removed. The final item was 128 Tate, approval of exterior modifications. That request was granted. It was a modification. It was simply the addition of what I would call a bay window, but that is not correct technically, but it was an addition adjustment, window adjustment, and with one modification it was approved.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Do we have any other reports? No.
One thing I was supposed to mention was that Commissioner Kane was there, too.
Keeping with his perfect attendance. The town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which is a cornerstone of democracy and essential to the Planning Commission conducting its business on behalf of the town and the members of the town. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. One way is written communications are always helpful. If you would like to email staff prior to any Commission meeting, we appreciate the input. At meetings of the Commission, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. First is during the verbal communications period where an individual may speak to the Commission on any item which is not on the agenda. And second, any member of the public may speak during the public portion of any agendaized item. If you do wish to address the Commission tonight, I ask that you please fill out a speaker card. They are in the backs of the benches in front of you. And when you come up to the podium, please make sure you adjust that microphone and state your name clearly for the record. This is the verbal communications portion of our meeting. However, I do not see any cards for the verbal communication, so unless somebody jumps up quickly, I'm going to assume that we are not going to be speaking on any un-agendaized items. So the next, on our agendaized items, we had items one through three had been placed on the consent calendar. We have had a request to pull item number two from the consent, so I have pulled that. We can then make a motion. All items on the consent calendar can be approved or denied based on one motion. And just to let the Commission know that from this point moving forward, you will see the approval of the minutes on the consent. So would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent items? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I will move the approval of the consent items, except that item two has been withdrawn.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Kane? All in favor?
Aye.
I would like to make a comment that I'll be recusing myself from the vote, and that would be for item number three, which is 151 North Santa Cruz Avenue. The location of my business is within 500 feet of the proposal. Other than that, I second the, I agree to the motion. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Since item number two has been pulled from our consent calendar, that is going to be our first item that we will be reviewing today. So give me one moment to move my notes around, because that's not how I had had things scheduled. All right. We're now considering item number two, Conditional Use Permit U-15-010, requesting approval to install a vineyard greater than 3,000 square feet on property zoned HR-5, APN number 510-47-025, located at 100 Clifton Avenue. Can I have a show of hands of all commissioners who were able to visit the property? Do we have any disclosures from any commissioners?
I met with one of the applicants.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Mosley?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to legalize an approximately 9,000-square-foot vineyard on their property at 100 Clifton Avenue. The applicant believed, after talking with staff members, that the installation of the vineyard would not require any permits, and as such, it was installed late last year. The vineyard was installed and is maintained by a private company who harvests the wines, harvests the grapes and produces wines for the property owner and/or combines the wine into a regional mixture depending on the harvest that year. The size of that vineyard would produce approximately one barrel in a good harvest, but most years it would probably produce less than that. The area of the vineyard was installed on a vacant area of the property and did not require any grading or tree removals, and as such, the vineyard, as installed, would comply with town codes and standards, and staff would support the approval of the application subject to the attached conditions. This completes staff's report, and I am here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Have any questions? Commissioner Kane?
So the limit on a private vineyard is 3,000 square feet? Beyond that, you need a CUP?
Correct.
Did you say the applicant was advised that they wouldn't need a CUP?
The applicant has communicated that they spoke with previous staff members that are not part of the town anymore and that, based on their communications, they understood that it wouldn't require any permits. I can't speak to those communications and what they were, what they held and where the miscommunication potentially occurred.
I think that's important, because the application summary says requesting approval to install a vineyard greater than it's already there.
Correct.
And it's likely that it's already there because somebody said it was okay?
I don't know the answer to that.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions of staff? No? All right. We're going to move to the public portion of the hearing, and it was Dr. Weisman that asked to pull this item, so he will speak first. He will have 10 minutes, correct? Three. Okay. Because you pulled the item, you have three minutes to address the Commission.
Dave Weisman, Frances Oaks. I ask for this item to be pulled from the consent calendar for several reasons. First of all, staff and some concerned community citizens are in the joint process of revising the town's grading ordinance. This application highlights the need for certain revisions. First off, staff and the applicant are incorrect when they say that no grading was done for this vineyard. May I once again remind everyone that our grading ordinance, wisely, I believe, defines grading as not only the moving around of dirt, but, and I quote, "the removal, plowing under, and burial," or burial of vegetative ground cover. Clear 100 or 7,000 square feet of ground cover, and you have graded. And yes, a grading permit is not required under the present ordinance if an agriculture operation is proposed. But this brings up the hypothetical situation where a property owner desires to clear 3,000 square feet for a supposed vineyard, not requiring a CPU or grading permit, and then changes their mind and sells the property. Or, and where was the protection for the hillsides? Number two, as the conditional use permit findings, staff says that planting a vineyard would enhance the appearance of the property and provide erosion control. Really? Since when are vineyards nicer to look at than original brush, especially if the original brush was native chaparral or scrub? And who says that vineyards are better erosion controls than brush, especially during the rainy season, when the vines have been trimmed back and there is no vegetation to dissipate the energy of falling raindrops? Staff also claims that the vineyard would not be detrimental to public health safety. The applicant's photos show that the site is steep, such that the applied lime sulfur and fertilizers will be washed down possibly into sewer systems. Was this situation analyzed? Lime sulfur, while approved for organic production systems, is nevertheless not to enter sewer systems or waterways, because its high water solubility can harm plants and animals, especially fish, and can interfere with public wastewater treatment procedures. Lime sulfur is to be disposed of in hazardous waste collection centers. Staff's report says that the conditions placed on the permit will mitigate potential impacts, but these conditions are not provided in the staff report. The applicant has hired a professional company to install and inservice their vines. The company then touted how vine, vineyards, use much less water than planted lawn grass areas, which is a ridiculous comparison, since the area was previously brushed and required no planting, no watering at all. And while I can sympathize with the applicant's claim that they got misdirection from staff, ignorance of the law is still no excuse for violating it.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Kane?
Dr. Weisman, many good points. Your point about the owner changes his mind after he does the agricultural permitted grading and then sells the house, isn't that the case with every CUP? No, let me say it again. That is the case with almost every CUP, that it goes with the land. And if somebody sells it, somebody else gets that permit, can do what they want. What would you propose as the remedy?
Well, the applicant doesn't even have to sell the house. They can just, right now, grade it and then say, ah, I changed my mind. And the hillside is graded legally.
What's the remedy?
What is the remedy? Well, hopefully, we're going to address that when we come back to you with a revision of the grading ordinance.
All right. Good.
We're thinking about that.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Talisfor?
You were speaking about the lime sulfur that they put around the bottom of the vines. And in the letter from Mr. Philippe, it says here that the Post and Trellis group that's going to be caring for this vineyard uses organics, pesticides, lime sulfur, and stylet oil. Now, is that, is organic pesticides, would that be different than, you know, regular pesticides?
No. The lime sulfur is, is okay to use in a vineyard that can label itself organic. That doesn't mean that there's no problems associated with the use of that pesticide. And it's a concentration thing, and it's also, it also has to do with where it goes when it rains. And lime sulfur is not a natural compound. It is something that's manufactured.
So when they say organics and they include the lime sulfur, is that...
Again, it's the way organic, I believe, is defined by the government. And in this case, it's probably, it's apparently better to use something that's labeled organic, lime sulfur, than something that's not organic.
I would think it would be less invasive. It would be less invasive as, you know, it would dissipate it down the hills, is what I was thinking.
That I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
But I just know what one can find on the web about lime sulfur.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Thank you. So I do not have a card, but we now give the applicant 10 minutes to address the Commission on this item. Is the applicant here? Yes? Great. After you speak, make sure you state your name. Could you please fill out a speaker card for me, please?
Good evening. My name is Mark Philippe. I'm the applicant for this project. Thank you, Dr. Weisman, it is, for that opinion. I will start by saying that it was really, it's not really our intent to produce wine on this property. When we bought the property, we actually submitted a different landscape design with plants and, you know, a lot of different things. But after further research, we decided that we would pare down our landscape design quite dramatically. And actually, the original landscape design was submitted to the town, and that's, I think, what you have on record. We then revised this, because we realized that we were on a very steep slope. We also were in a high-risk fire hazard area, and we were faced with brush on this hillside, a steep hillside. And so we were looking for erosion control and fire breaking solution. And also, we wanted to make sure that we were going to be water drought, if you will, sensitive. So after research, we found that the grapevine is actually a great candidate for erosion control, fire break, and water usage. So we then decided to go with a vineyard, and so we worked with our landscape architect, David Fox, at the time, and approached the town to make sure that was okay. And we had, you know, verbal communications with previous or former town members, town staff members, and all the indications provided to us were that we didn't really need a permit. We were okay to do whatever we wanted from a landscaping standpoint on the site. So we did. And we never really, you know, hid our intent from anybody. We were pretty upfront and straightforward and tried to follow all the rules as we knew them. I will respond to Dr. Weisman's comment in regards to the brush that, you know, we apparently did away with. If you go back and visit our site, which I think a couple of you did, you'll see that there's actually, the brush is growing up again. So we are, you know, going to keep it that way, because we understand that, you know, the more vegetation we have up there, the better. So the brush will be cut down, because it's a fire hazard, but we're not killing it. So I just wanted to, you know, to answer that comment. So our, as I said, our original intent was not to produce wine. It's not even a given that we will actually use pesticides at all. Our intent was erosion control, pleasing look for our backyard, fire breakage, and water drought-resistant planting. We have hired this company to tend to our vineyard. We can purchase back wine production from this vineyard, but we're not obliged to. So again, we're not in the business of, you know, producing wine, nor was it our original intent. So we believe that we, you know, we were following all the rules of the town, and unbeknownst to us, we apparently did not. So we apologize for that. But again, we have, we have a good intent here and want to make sure that we, you know, we follow all the rules. So this is why we're here.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Kane, then Commissioner Hanson?
You may have covered this, but I want to hear it again. You're saying you were advised that it was okay to do what you did?
Correct. Yeah. We didn't get any indications that we really needed any special permit for this vineyard.
What do you understand is going to happen now, as a result of having 9,000 square feet?
Well, again, I go back to the, you know, to the staff report, which seems to support the fact that we're, you know, we seem to be within the law here. So I'm not quite sure, to be honest, Commissioner.
Any, any fines before the fact of the CUP? Or does the CUP exonerate the whole matter?
So the applicants required, they were required to pay double fees for the application as a penalty.
Thank you. The article you gave us on your vine's very low water usage, that was appreciated. Certainly, if you left it the way it was when you found it, God would take care of the watering. But if you put in landscaping, you might be using 10 times the amount of water that a vineyard would need. Is that essentially correct?
I believe so. I mean, yes.
That's what the article says.
Then, yes.
Perhaps I'll get a copy of this to Dr. Weisman later.
Sure.
But this was very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
In speaking with your wife earlier today, I know she indicated to me that, that a requirement from, I believe, the fire department was to clear the brush three to four times a year because of the fire risk. So my question is this, what was the source of the opinion that the vineyards are more of a fire break than having the brush? I mean, and is that correct, that the county or whatever source determined that the brush was a fire hazard and had to be cleared on a regular basis? I'd just like to understand that better.
Sure. So, you know, unlike brush, vines stay green for most of the summer, obviously, and, you know, it's, whereas the brush, you know, dies out pretty quickly and is much more flame-prone than, you know, than green plants. So just logic alone would tell me that, you know, that, you know, is, you know, a better barrier against fire. I haven't done, you know, a lot of research on this. We were mostly concerned, you know, with erosion control and removing, you know, the brush, the dry brush, or at least, you know, tampering it down. So, and it's the cutting requests three or four times a year.
And you got the idea for the vines being in erosion control from who?
I just did some research on the web. I mean, the vines, the vine roots go deep into the ground, especially if you don't water them. And by doing that, it, you know, it's a really good soil keeper, if you will, erosion control keeper.
Any other questions? Commissioner Talisfor?
Very quickly, are you going to be producing that barrel of wine, or somewhat barrel of wine, on your property?
No. No. The wine gets picked and then drawn away to, up to Menlo Park, and that's where the winemaking facility is.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one quick question. With the company that you have hired for the maintenance and taking the graves, do you know if they have to turn in any kind of, for some reason, hazmat keeps coming to mind, but that's not the right word, but usually when pesticides and things are being utilized on property where it may flow to the bay or whatever, there's some county applications or things that need to get filled out. Do you know if that's a requirement for them, since they are actually taking it and utilizing it in Los Gatos, but making the wine in Menlo Park? Or would staff be able to answer that?
We're not aware of any requirements for that, and we can definitely look into that.
Yeah. I would be curious, just because of the large amount of square footage, the amount of pesticides that may be used on the property. Okay. That was it. Does anyone have any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Please make sure you fill out a card.
Sure.
Normally, at this point, this is where we go to the public comment portion, but I don't have any cards. Okay. Sorry. I don't have any other public speaker cards for this item. So, Dr. Weisman, the, he doesn't get to? Okay. Okay. All right. Sorry. Oh, I guess we don't have any other comments, so I'm going to close the public portion of this item and ask for my fellow commissioners if you have any questions of staff, comments, or if anyone would like to make a motion on this item. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the request to install the vineyard as described here. We would find that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to the guidelines and the implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15304. Make the required findings, as required by Section 2920-190 of the Code, for the granting of a conditional use permit, which is Exhibit 2 to our package. Make the required findings to the proposed vineyard as consistent with the hillside development standards and guidelines, also Exhibit 2, and approve the conditional use permit subject to the conditions contained in Exhibit 3. So that's the motion.
Great. Do we have a second or any comments? Commissioner Talisfor?
I will go ahead and second that.
All right. Any other comments before we take a vote? Questions of staff? No? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Are there any appeal rights, Mr. Paulson?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal that decision to the Town Council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. The appeal requires a fee to be submitted, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
All right. Thank you. All right. We're now going to consider item number four, Architectural and Site Application S-14-027, considering an appeal of the decision of the DRC, which approved an architectural and site application to demolish and construct a new single-family residence at 15, I don't know if I actually wrote that wrong, 15925 Quell Hill Road, Zone HR-1, APN number 527-02-007. And Ms. Mosley?
Yes. Good evening. The applicant is proposing to add approximately 1,200 square feet to their existing 2,800-square-foot residence and detached garage. The applicant is proposing to retain a significant portion of the existing residence's framing and foundation. However, the proposed work would result in what is considered a technical demolition, and as such, staff reviewed this application as a new single-family residence. And the required, excuse me, required findings for you tonight would include the single-family demolition finding. The proposal includes a 100-square-foot addition to the existing detached garage or carport, however you look at it, and the remainder is predominantly additions to the rear of the existing residence. The applicant spoke with each of the neighbors early in the process and did their best to accommodate their concerns by lowering or moving gable ends and by building a cellar rather than a second floor, as their neighbors have done recently or in the last 10 years. Staff considered the application over the course of three Development Review Committee meetings in the months of July and August. Staff and the applicant worked to understand and address the concerns of the neighbor who is now the appellant. And while the applicant has stated concerns, or, sorry, excuse me, the appellant has stated concerns regarding privacy and parking versus landscaping in the front setback, their main issue has been the shared easement over their property for access and utilities. This issue is documented throughout your staff report by staff, the applicant, and the appellant, so I won't dig into it further. The town attorney has provided direction that while the width of the easement may need to be defined by the courts prior to occupancy, the property has legal access and should not continue to be held up, the processing of the application should not be, continue to be held up. The application has been reviewed by staff for consistency with the town's current standards and guidelines, and staff recommends that the Commission deny the appeal and approve the application subject to the attached conditions. This completes staff's report. We are here if you have any questions.
Commissioner Badami, then Commissioner Kane?
Can you clarify Town Code Section 29.10.060, that off-street parking is not allowed in any required yard abutting a street, and how this particular application may or may not be affected by this Town Code section in regard to circulation? And I'm referring to the Exhibit 13, Page 3, which is correspondence from Mr. Krosop?
I understand. The required parking for this use is two parking spaces for the main residence and one parking space for the secondary, the existing secondary unit. The required parking is provided in the garage slash, the converted garage slash carport. The additional spaces that you see in front of the residence are direction from the hillside specific plan in regards to when there isn't off-street parking, you're anticipating the need for guest parking, and those parking spaces can be stacked up in a driveway and such, but they should be provided onsite if, whenever possible.
Thank you.
But that is not required parking.
Okay. I'd also like to make a disclosure at this time, that while I was out at the property, I did have incidental contact with Mrs. Krosop. I hope I'm saying your name correctly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Kane?
So we have a large house being built next to my house, and I meet with you and the builder, and they elect, instead of building a two-story house, to lower it and put in a cellar instead? to lower it and put in a cellar instead? Is that basically what happened here?
There was a combination of several neighbors that were concerned about a second story, including the appellant. And so through that communication, the applicant did pursue the cellar option rather than the second story.
In your opinion, was there more that the applicant could have done? Or still can do?
Well, it's still unclear to staff, as well as the applicant, what the actual concerns of the appellant are. They speak to privacy concerns, but we're not entirely sure where those privacy concerns are from and how, other than by, they want the house set back an additional 15 feet or so, which realistically requires them to completely remove all of the existing residence that they're retaining in order to accommodate.
So they didn't have much room to go?
Yeah.
And they did do a cellar instead of a second story?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Hanson?
One of the things I noticed, and I don't know if this was communicated from the appellant in, you know, previous to the document that was delivered on September 15, or received on September 15, was a, one of the key issues that seemed to be present in all the communications was this access road that's shared by the same, or driveway, as you would call it, by the two houses. And there was some mention of the, the appellant wanting to build a new road going down to Drysdale. And was this discussed in the development review committee process? Or is this new information or an idea? I mean, there was a, there was some mention that the applicant, you know, felt it wasn't feasible when they talked to their architect about it, but I just wanted to know kind of where that communication went.
So the applicant did look at a lot of options as they were pursuing developing this property. They spoke with staff frequently and early on in the process. They talked to staff about options of accessing off of Drysdale and Shady. And staff looked at it and couldn't find any way to comply with our hillside standards and guidelines with that route. It just, the impact to the natural hillside of that side of the property just seemed to, and the grading and the walls and such that would be required, there was no way that the applicant or staff could envision a way to, and the applicant's architect did do some, that's what I'm looking for, investigation of this in trying to see if there was a feasible way to access off of that side. And he can speak more to that.
Right, any other questions? Commissioner Kane?
One quick one. It's probably in front of my nose, but I looked quickly at the designs and schematics you provided. Is there a hammerhead issue with this property?
There is not. The fire department determined that turnaround was not going to be required. There's no feasible way to provide it on any of the properties up there. And the fire department determined that they haven't required on any of the properties previously and that it was, there's, that it was unreasonable for the fire department to require a fire turnaround and that they would be able to work with what's up there.
I didn't know they did that. Thank you.
Commissioner Talasfor?
Just one, a quick question. How long has it been, how long has the house been vacant?
The applicant would have to speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have one just quick question. One of the items that was submitted was a signed document by a number of people for maintenance of the road. And in your discussions through DRC, obviously if you do bring large trucks up, there will be damage. How would it be figured? Would the applicant be replacing any damaged portions of the road? Does it fall to a neighborhood issue? How was that addressed?
So it's standard town policy that there is a pre-construction survey documentation of the existing private roadway. And then any damage that occurs during the construction, the applicant would be responsible for repairing.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? No? Thank you, Ms. Mosley. So now we will give the appellant 10 minutes to address the commission. I hope I say your name right. Mr. Krosup? Krosup, sorry. So I do want to clarify, because it's a little bit different. You, I know, I see you, your wife, and I believe your, well, John Livingstone, all are representing you. In this 10 minutes, and our attorney can correct me if I state this wrong, this 10 minutes encompasses all of your time, since you are all basically here to address us as the appellant.
We understand, Madam Chair, and thank you for clarifying it. I'm going to try and be as brief as possible. My name's Brad Krauskup. My wife and I live at 15921 Quail Hill Road, adjacent to the property that's being proposed for the new development. John Livingstone is here. He has helped us interpret some of the codes and the hillside specific plan and whatnot. And I don't know if Dana, my wife, and John will speak or not, but I guess that depends on how quickly I can get through this. First of all, did you all get a chance to get to the property and take a look at it? Seen a lot of head nodding. Thank you for doing that.
No, I did not.
Okay.
I haven't been driving this week.
It's okay. It's, I think it's important to visualize, but, you know, there's pictures and there's a lot of things that have gone on, but.
Let me clarify that.
Okay.
Commissioner Kane, you're eating up his time. So why don't we address that later?
Come back, Commissioner Kane. Anyway, thank you for the time of going out there. Thank you for tonight. And really, a lot of you have been doing this for a long time. And I don't think people express their appreciation enough for the fact that you do this. Dana and I have lived here for 32 years. We're, this is, this is hard. I do this kind of for a living, but when it's your residents, it's kind of a different animal. And, you know, we're really proud of who we are and what we've done in this town. There are friendships and the relationships and the involvement with the community. Nothing like what you folks do. But we didn't, I don't think we got to where we are. And I don't think people respect us the way they do because we're unreasonable people or non-responsive. And I feel a little bit like staff has suggested that maybe we're non-responsive or didn't try and make suggestions of how to approach this. There is an easement issue. There is no easement there that this project can be accessed to do the construction and the new development that's proposed. We want to change that. We want to memorialize an easement and provide Kevin and Sabrina access. But we want this process to be sensitive to our needs and our home. We want to live there the rest of our lives. And we don't want to do it with competing for circulation and parking and having our driveway as a turnaround point. And we think it can be solved. But if it can't be solved, you know, I think we've been kind of boxed into a corner where we've been told, no, there's, nothing can be done. And when the collaborative process between new two neighbors has been characterized to you, it really hasn't been a collaborative process. We met, and Kevin and Sabrina are very nice people. And I want to have a good, strong neighborly relationship for years to come. But we met Kevin and Sabrina before they purchased the property, but they were very interested. They might have been in contract. We told them of our experience in buying our house, the research I did of the hillside specific plan, making sure our house was fully permitted. We bought a house, we haven't changed it. It was there. But we fully expected the hillside plan, hillside specific plan to be adhered to. I know the plan pretty well, not as well as other people in this room, but I know it pretty well. We want it adhered to. And we want our needs and our sensitivities to circulation and parking and privacy adhered to, too. I think, I think any resident of Los Gatos is do that. And I don't think we should be any different. I want to, if I can do this quickly, is this, this is on, right? Marty mentioned, and we have, I admit it, we have made a big deal out of the easement thing. It's not, it's not the issue here. The issue is, how do you cite the home? And how do the two homes interact together? Park, circulation, privacy, views, all those things that I think this process should be sensitive to. You know, I always thought a planning process, looked at a situation and tried to improve it, make it the best it can be, complied with all the policies and codes. And I don't think that's been accomplished here. I have copies of this for everybody. This is just a blow up of the plan between the two homes. Our home and driveway are here. This represents what was anticipated by the applicant, Sabrina and Kevin, to be a 20-foot wide easement. It does not exist. I'd like to see, again, I'd like to memorialize it at some point in time. But you can see, this is our property line. So everything this direction and this direction is our property. And there's very little way for these seven cars, which are required by the hillside specific plan, to circulate and maneuver on the site. So staff has gone back and forth a little bit, that are these required parking spots or are they not required parking spots? If you really read the hillside specific plan, and I think you all have my letter, September 14th, it identifies specifically, the hillside specific plan requires those seven spots. Three in the carport, four additional spots. So can they be in a driveway? Yeah, they can be in a driveway. And if you make the determination that the entire front edge of the house is a driveway, then we're faced with, we have no landscaping and asphalt to the front of our neighbor's home, and that's what we look at. And I just don't think that's the best condition that we should have to live with. I think we can do better than that. I was going to go back and refer to my letter, but the points are in there of where we think there's conflict with the hillside specific plan, the standards and guidelines. Most of the ones I selected that I thought were in conflict have that word "shall" in there, which means they're a requirement. We don't think the, as proposed, it has met those requirements. I want to read a letter to you because we have attempted to interact with Kevin and Sabrina. And I think we have a fair relationship, given where we are. But back on June 15th, I responded to an email from Kevin. And I said, "You mentioned in your email that you would prefer not to have to go through our property to get to your house. But until the town of Los Gatos says it's okay to build a driveway from Drysdale, there isn't anything you can do about this. I think you know we have always preferred an approach that would provide access to your property from Drysdale. If I'm interpreting your statement correctly," and this is to Kevin, "we're on the same page. Independent access from Drysdale solves many concerns related to access, parking, circulation, and safety. I'd like to propose that we approach the town together with a plan we can all endorse. Let's get together and discuss this approach as soon as possible. I think including your architect and a planning consultant we've hired, John Livingstone, would be helpful." That was on June 15th. We got no response to that. And while this talks about Drysdale, we're not, we're not bent on the fact that it has to be from Drysdale. We know there's some complications with Drysdale as the access point. But we don't think the house should be sited 60 feet from our front door, 30 feet from our property line, and have no landscaping and basically be a parking lot at our front door. Again, my letter cites, I think, a lot of examples of where things don't comply with the hillside specific plan and the standards, Los Gatos specific plan. I'm going to show you one more thing. We think, and this is very presumptuous, or it could be read this way, but we've asked so many times, but you would have.
I need you to remember to take the microphone with you.
A gentleman architect who participated in the development of the hillside specific plan, I went and talked to him. And we just, we developed a footprint that we thought, this could be a very acceptable footprint for both us and hopefully Sabrina and Kevin. The house is preserved at roughly the same size. And this is the setback line. And this is, I know it's very difficult to see, but this could be guest parking. The, the carport is removed, and it's a subterranean garage. But we think it could be a great home. And again, we're not trying to design our neighbor's home. But we were asked many, many times what our problems with the design were. So we thought we'd provide a suggestion. I hope you'll support our appeal. We want to live there forever, and we want to do it with some privacy. And we don't want disputes with our neighbor going forward about parking and circulation and turnarounds. There's many, many other things, and I'm going to use up all our time. Sorry. There's many, many other things. You got to put fire tanks up there. We had to do it. And what we're hearing from the staff is, no, you don't have to put tanks up there. But you do. There's not a fire hydrant within 500 feet of this house. And so there's some safety concerns also. Anyway, again, I hope you'll support our appeal. We want to go back and work with the applicant on a plan that will work for both of us. That's our intent. I don't want to get into this easement stuff.
All right, do we have any questions? Commissioner Badami, then Commissioner Talasfor?
So I heard you very clearly that it's the parking at the front door and lack of landscaping that concerns you greatly. You also made note in your letter, which was going to be Exhibit 13, Page 2, about the bulk mass and volume of the building impacting your property. Can you elaborate on that?
When we met with the architect and Sabrina, we noted that, you know, our view is compromised quite a bit. We'd like to see the height of the structure worked on a little bit. It's at about 21 feet now, I think. We think there's some designs that could bring it down. When we suggested a couple of things, they were rejected. And I understand.
Clarify your view to the east?
North hillside.
Thank you.
The hillside that's across Shady Lane.
Thank you. Commissioner Talasfor?
Just as clarification, all right, in light of the fact that you're addressing parking and landscaping with this design, can you walk us through where that all, I can't make out what, I saw that in our packet, but I really couldn't understand.
I understand.
But all of that is. Just in the front, not the back.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not finely developed. But this is a driveway from here to here. This is landscaping. All of this is landscaping. This is landscaping against a house that comes around. This is all landscaping. This is landscaping. This is a landscape strip that would be adjacent to our property line and fence. This is room for three guest parking spots there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, Commissioner Hanson?
You, this proposal went in front of the Development Review Committee on three separate occasions, and they continued it a couple of times to address some of the issues, and then it was approved. Has the Development Review Committee or our staff seen these proposed designs that you have come up with for the house?
No, not before our submittal. And I'm sorry to look to Marty, but I couldn't remember. We were here at three design review committee meetings. And we were prepared to present them, but we were asked not to.
I want to ask a quick question, just, I'm making sure that I am, I'm reading the overhead. I'm looking at the Alpha Land Survey Sheet 1 of 2 for my fellow commissioners. This black and white photo here? So as I'm looking at this, as I look at your parcel, I want to make sure that I'm seeing this properly. Your garage is sitting directly adjacent for their, to their proposed carport. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
What would be the approximate height of your garage right now?
I don't know. It's single-story, and I think we have a 4 and 12 pitch roof. I'm going to guess it's 16 feet.
Around 15 feet is my.
I think it's going to be 15 or 16 feet.
Okay. So, and again, just situating myself here, as I was driving up there, your house, your garage is here. Your house sits at a higher elevation than your garage, correct?
It does.
Okay. So if their carport was adjacent to yours and was the approximate same elevation as yours, you would, no matter what height that was, or whatever, you're still going to be looking from your, because, I mean, you guys kind of have a very nice perch up there, which is lovely. No matter what, really, you're going to wind up kind of looking down on that. Am I looking at that very correctly from how I was standing around your house? Obviously, I didn't walk on your property. So I'm wanting to understand your vantage point from standing there and looking down. Currently, if you were to look down, you're looking down on your own garage, and you would be looking down on the carport proposed directly. be looking down on the carport proposed directly next to it.
Yes, from, yes, from above, yeah.
So, they're, they're quite, you know, obviously, your property lines are quite close together. In, in your conversations with the applicant, was there any discussion on what vegetation could be planted between these two that could grow to an acceptable level that perhaps would allow for some of the parking and the items that they need, but would also make sure that you're not looking at concrete? Did you discuss that?
Not really. Our understanding from staff is there's no required landscape plan. We asked many times if there was a landscape plan.
So we're very fortunate up here to sit and, and oftentimes, look at items such as proposed landscaping that can be written into our conditions of approval. Thank you. I'm reaching for words tonight. So that is something, as I was looking at this, and was there today, that I wanted to discuss with both of you, when we have each of you up here. So, there are all kinds of, I'm not an arborist. I would perhaps recommend that one was involved. But if we are looking at how we can give them the required parking that we are tied to by our own guidelines, would you be willing, in this process, to look at proposed vegetation, trees, something else that may grow to an acceptable height that would give you somewhat of a visual barrier?
Yeah, I mean, I, we think there ought to be landscaping in the, in the proposed new project. I still believe our primary concern is how cars circulate for both properties, and where that parking occurs.
Sure. I'm just tackling one problem at a time.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
So, so you talked a lot about the visual and looking down on that, and to me, that seems like something that perhaps we could solve a little easier, easier than the traffic, which I think we're actually gonna have to wait and discuss some of that with staff when the time comes, I believe. Okay, do we have any other questions? Commissioner Padame? When you purchased your property 32 years ago, was it a vacant piece of land? Did you have the home built, or was it already built, or did you renovate?
I'm sorry. We lived for a few years on Marchmont, and 19 years on Blueberry Hill Drive, and then the last six years at our existing location. We bought the house in its existing condition.
Thank you. I, I was just wondering how construction vehicles accessed the site when the home was built on Quail Hill.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. We weren't, we weren't there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will now give the applicant 10 minutes to address the commission. Michael, am I gonna, I hope I say your name correctly. I have Michael Verris here.
That's it, Michael Verris.
All right.
I guess.
Okay.
My voice is loud, so hopefully I'm not gonna blow you out. I had a prepared thing, but let me kind of address some of the things that he talked about that might be helpful. The height question that he has about the house, related to his house, when he says he thinks it was 21 feet, but he doesn't remember, it's only 16 feet, okay? So, the 21-foot, there's not a portion of this home that he can see from any vantage point on his property that's 21 feet. The maximum ridge is 19 feet, and the ridge that runs parallel, that he would visually see, is only 16 feet high. The existing roof on that, that building that's up there now, that's 2 and 12, which you can see in the, well, I guess you don't have it, but in your whole package, it's 14 feet. So the ridge that's gonna be in his visual line is only two foot, two foot higher than the existing ridge. And that house you've seen has a 2 and 12 pitch, which is not the architecture that we think the property deserves. We kept it down deliberately to reduce the impact on his property as well. The other comment, let's see, the, what other comments? This landscape, front landscape issue has never been brought up at any of these meetings. He's mentioned something about parking, about parking within the setbacks. He's been told that, that we satisfy all those requirements, that complies with all the hillside ordinances, and yet he throws this new one about the landscaping in the front is brand-new. Is there a way we can do some sort of landscape screening? Of course. If it had been brought up in a meeting, there's several things we could do. The parking scheme that, that he put up there, excuse me, is, to me, is the most realistic way that cars could actually park and maneuver. What the truth is, if we stacked cars the way his property was approved for, two cars in the garage, two cars stacked behind it in that little driveway portion, if we did the same operation, we'd have no park, no parking and no need for the paving. The additional paving is actually trying to resolve the question that he's concerned about, as well as we are, is some sort of turnaround. And there is actually a, not official, but there's actually a fairly reasonable hammerhead type of scenario that would play out because of the way we designed the home. I removed a portion of the existing covered porch on the footprint of the home deliberately to allow room for cars to maneuver in that tight space up there.
Could, could we put that up? Thanks.
Yeah, and you put it up, I could probably talk with this, probably talk from across the room. Do you have that thing again that you could put up?
Well, those are my drawings, but it's still gonna show the turnaround point.
Okay, so, I show 2, 2, 2, 2, and then...
You need to, you, you have to have the mic up. I know you're allowed, but it's for...
Okay, sorry. I show the three cars that are required, the, over here, as we spoke before. These are the four guest parking spaces. I proposed them in these four spots because I saw a scenario where they could each get out without having to move all the other cars. But technically, as Marnie suggested, you can comply with the requirements by stacking the cars, which would mean that I could put all the cars here, and I'd have no need for parking quote-unquote here. But the reality is, because of the turnaround situation on this property, this area is valuable for, for us to be able to make that maneuver, as well as a fire truck or some sort of vehicle to be able to hammerhead out of here. So this is an important part, and the existing structure sits right here. So we proposed this recessed area to provide that access. We also have landscaping here, and if it was just a matter, if this had been brought up in one of the DRC meetings that we've had, several, and the other meetings I've had with him, if he had mentioned that, we could have talked about ways to address more landscaping possibly, or taller landscaping in these areas to provide more screening. There's actually a tree right here that blocks quite a bit of the story poles when we stood on his property and saw them, that we could probably maintain and, and still make a turnaround work. But, so that's related to his parking and his landscape question. And the height of the, of the ridge. The other stuff that I already prepared before, before he spoke was, I just want to let you know that, and I think Marnie mentioned some of this already, that my client started this process with a two-story home that was very similar in design to Brad's house next door, in size and height and whatever. And they didn't get very far with planning or the neighbors, because even though the neighbors all have two-story homes, they were objecting to a two-story home going in next to them, which, you know, I guess I can understand, but that meant that they couldn't do the two-story home process. And they were told by Brad and I guess other neighbors, before I got involved, that a one-story solution would be preferable to them, and they could support something in that regard. So then, my clients then attempted to design a one-story home that would satisfy their programming needs and size and whatnot, and they couldn't get one that would fit within the restricted limits that we have on this property, that would give them any sense of a backyard or any outdoor living space whatsoever. So that's when they found me. I was working on a project around the corner that had just gotten approved by the town of Los Gatos, and I, I'm very familiar with the hillside guidelines and all the rules. And I told them, or I recommended that they consider a one-story home, but some of the square footage being put underneath as a way to get the square footage up competitive with what their needs were, and still be able to maintain and get neighbor support. And I said that I thought that proposal had a chance to go through the DRC process and not end up here, and that I could get neighbor support, I could get planning support and engineering and the outside architect consultant, I could get all their support for a prom, with a proposal like that. And we did. We had full support of everyone, with the exception of one neighbor. And that's why we're here tonight. So, the, the other thing to keep in mind, the existing home, and the biggest issue that's been running around out here that he's, he is mentioning but not, is that this existing home has been there for 58 years using that existing driveway. What else did I have on here? We've met with the neighbors to the east, to the west. We've made concessions to the roof design to get their support. They're all in support. One's in Aspen and isn't here tonight, but he supports the project, and he did so in writing. The other neighbor's been spoken to, and, and they're, they're in support of the project as well. And really, those are the only two properties that join, there's only three properties that adjoin, and both of them are supporting it. And to be honest, the impact to Brad's home, standing on his patio looking, the only impact is a very, very minor, two-foot taller ridge to a bare hillside on the other side that's almost screened by trees as it is right now. So I really don't see the impact. What else? We tried, he, he mentions the separation between the two homes, when the truth is, we are, the separation that's proposed is exactly the separation that's there now between the existing home and his home. And the front door is 12 feet further back than what was the minimum required between the two properties. The truth is, his home was built as close as he could to that setback, so, in that crowded situation, in our limited amount of development area on this property, we don't really have a lot of choice and don't have a lot of flexibility in moving the house around. They mentioned the parking. We have more parking than, we can park more cars than what's required. I, it's really hard to see how he could park even as many as is required on his property. We do provide, like I said, pretty much a turnaround, or a significantly improved turnaround to what's there now. They talked about, in a lot of the meetings, their concerns were about the impact of construction. And, and when they came in with their proposal for this totally different design that was gonna be basically grading, maximum grading to lower the home and bury the home into the hillside, the amount of heavy machinery and impact and dirt and construction that it would take to even accomplish that, if it was possible, would certainly be a lot more than the impact of what we're proposing, which is the existing footprint and existing pad that's up there being fairly maintained. So the hillside stability is not in jeopardy. There's not a bunch of huge trucks moving around. It'll be a fairly, and that's one, another reason why we're trying to maintain and save some of the foundation and the footprint of the existing home. Like I said, I guess we're only here because he appealed the process. Everyone else, neighbors, planning, fire, engineering, have all supported this project. And so I urge you guys to support it as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Any questions?
Commissioner Talasfor.
I just wanted to clarify. So, in our staff report, it says that the proposed house height is 21 feet, according to Exhibit, hang on a minute. Oh, where is it? It's in Exhibit, it's where all the, I'm not gonna be able to find it now.
I think, which, if you look...
So I just, I, I only am asking because I want to be, because that's not what you said.
Well, no...
That's what I'm reading, so I want to be, know what I'm...
Well, they're actually probably both through. The, the point is that the, the downhill side, the, the part of the, the end of the property where we've done the addition, the extension that goes to the north, because the lot at that edge of the property drops off so severely, the actual maximum height defined by the way the town defines the heights, it's tallest at the very far northern end, the farthest end away from, from Brad's home. The portion of the property that nobody looks at, it's the north end, it has no neighbors. So any heights that get above 19 feet that you're referring to would have to be at that far end of the property. The main ridge is 19 feet off the pad, and the ridge that tees off that goes parallel to his home is 16.
Okay, so that, that's good to know, because on Exhibit 4, it does say that the height is proposed at 21 feet.
I think if, I don't know if those, do we have those drawn?
I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, yeah.
So what you're saying is, the, the actual, the highest point is at the north end of this building.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
And it was in our packet, but I just wanted to hear it from you. It, it appeared that there wasn't going to be any increase in setbacks. Maybe, maybe in one location on the side, it might have gone up a foot or two, but it, it is relative to the existing footprint of the house, you're not moving the house closer to the neighbors. It's gonna stay basically where it is.
Right, exactly. It doesn't get closer to Brad's, it doesn't get any closer to Bernie and Marcia, and it doesn't get any closer than the limits of the home now towards the other neighbor.
And, and at the same time, though, it's not, it's not being moved back either to the north.
It, oh, it's extended to the north where there's nobody. That's where the property...
No, I meant the front of the house.
The front of the house is not being moved one way or the other, no.
It's exactly where, where it is right now.
Exactly.
It's not changing.
Commissioner Talasfor?
This is a follow-up, and, and that, now that you understand that there was a landscaping concern, is that, that is something that I think we heard you say, that you would be willing to work with the neighbors, the adjacent neighbors?
Well, I want to be really clear that I, my projects get approved because I'm looking for a win-win. And, and I've told that to Brad, and we've tried everything. I mean, to, even to the point of looking at other architects' solutions to this, which is kind of unorthodox, but I even thought that if there's a win-win in there, I think we should find it, because they want to live there happily next to them too. So we looked for a win-win, and if anything in that process, every chance we've had, we've asked for his input on what it is, is his biggest concern, and we, and, and we get a lot of nothing specific. But if he had literally said at the meeting that he has a concern about the landscaping, of course, that, that would have been an easy fix.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I want to ask a couple of questions. I want to actually be even more specific than what Commissioner Talasfor is just saying. Because when you were talking, you were looking at the landscape directly in front of the house. I am following this process, and depending on where this goes, I would very much like to request that if you were looking on what we're looking at right there, and you look to the very left of those three cars, it's a very, very thin strip there.
This, this here?
Either way.
This, this here?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking, I'm just saying right there. I would really encourage that there be a discussion between you guys about what would be planted there that would provide some type of height and screening from the vantage point down. And I assume, based on what you just said, you would be very willing to talk and see what could be placed there that would provide some mutual screening.
Yeah, well, then, keep in mind, his paving is almost on the fence, okay? So the only landscape screening that's presently there, and there is some, is all on our property as well. So if it's a matter of doing something in there that we can satisfy without losing parking, without losing all the benefits of having the extra space for turnaround, for parking, and all the other assets, I don't see any reason why that would be a problem. But keep in mind, his home is higher than this home. There's no structure here that we're really screening. The existing structure's almost 40 feet back, so I really, and we're, if that's important to them, I think there's something we could probably work out in there.
Okay, yes, because I do understand all that, but I'm saying it seemed important, and I would like to encourage that. The second thing I had brought up earlier but wanted to address to you is, as staff said, if there is any damage on the road, based on the construction trucks that were going up and down, your, your, sorry, the homeowner is fully aware that they are responsible for repair of that, correct?
That's not a, that's not a specific condition to this project, right? That's any project, that, that would be the condition, so of course, of course.
Okay, well, I just, sometimes that's in there, but people aren't fully aware.
And actually, I think that speaks to the other idea that this pursuit of another way in, or dropping the house, or doing some significant movement of dirt and stuff to drop this home, as he's proposing. Like I said, the equipment and the work that would take place would, would be much more impact on that road.
All right. Any other questions? No? Thank you. I do not have any other speaker cards on this item, so at this point... applicant first, and then the appellant. So the way this would work is you would have five more minutes usually to address any concerns that came up from other speakers. Yeah, if you want another five minutes, you get another five minutes.
Am I addressing?
That's what I'm saying. We, we did not...
I didn't respond to?
Yeah, you did not have anything. So then, if you do not have anything, then the appellant has an additional five minutes to address the commission for any items.
You know, again, one thing I, I would like to make clear, and I believe this is a factual statement, we met with Kevin and Sabrina just before they bought the house. They came back shortly after buying the house with a two-story scheme that was one elevation, not prepared by an architect, and we let them know we had concerns. A year went by, and we didn't hear anything until the story polls went up. A year. We were never contacted, and it was only after I sent an email that said, hey, the story polls were up, we should talk. I wish it was different than that. I don't believe Mike's characterizing the increase in height correctly. You folks have seen the story polls. This is hard to see, but I think you can see the top of the story polls from the existing house. But I will say, height of the structure is not the overriding consideration here. It's how do we circulate? How do we comply with the hillside-specific plan? Should I, let me go back into my letter, and there's about five or six or eight different places where this proposed project does not comply with the hillside-specific plan. Whether it's proof of access, which we know there's not proof of access that'll support this construction right now, we'd like to memorialize that, but we know it's not there. First American Title has suggested that Sabrina and Kevin file a claim because they misrepresented the easement. We need to solve these issues, and it shouldn't be after the fact. It shouldn't be after this is, goes down the road. And the hillside-specific plan is specific to that. These things, proof of access, is solved on the front end of a project, not at this point. The parking in the front setback, that's a specific of the hillside-specific plan, unless you want to interpret it that you can pave a house right up to the doorstep. There's several others. They're all in my letter from September 14th. Thanks for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Do we have any other questions? Commissioner King.
But first to the town attorney. The speaker's talking about proof of access, and we're all talking about egress and getting in and out. You know, that to me could be a tipping point, but it's treated as de minimis in the documents we received from the town. Can you tell us what's going on with that road and how it may affect this appeal?
I certainly have a legal opinion as to the easements and the ability to access this property, but that's not the town's responsibility to make that determination. What we've put in the condition is a condition that they have to have that issue resolved either with a new access agreement recorded or with the improvements approved prior to occupancy. The last thing we want to do is make a legal interpretation of this planning commission to whether they do or do not have access because that'll just open up to litigation. The access should be resolved between the parties and will need to before they can have occupancy.
What if they don't?
If they don't get it resolved, then the court, the court's the right place for that to be resolved, not by this body because then, because then if you make the determination there is no access, you'll be sued, the town would be. If you say there is access, you'll be sued. So they need to resolve it, and if they can't resolve it amongst themselves, then the court would make that determination, which is the correct body to do it.
What happens to the project?
And it wouldn't involve us.
What happens to the project in the meantime?
It, they could move forward, but they won't be able to get occupancy certificate until it's completed. So unlikely that it would move forward until that issue is resolved. But we don't have the ability to make that. We don't have the, we're not a court of law. We don't have the ability to say, yes, you do have access or you don't have access.
So the demo's been approved, the AMS has been approved, everything's ready to go, and really the one thing that could hold this up is the road. Is that correct?
Certainly could.
Fascinating. And you're willing to work with them on this access issue?
Absolutely. We want to solve some of our concerns.
Provided you get the design you want.
Provided there's compromise. I just got to say something, Commissioner. Not one suggestion that we've made to modify this house has been made, not one. And it's been represented, it's not 21 feet. It is 21 feet. It is 60 feet from our front door, so I'm not, I'm going too far. I want to answer your question. Yes, we want to work with them to memorialize the easement. We have no problem with that. But we want a home next to us that, again, I said it before, where there's going to be circulation and parking. We want it set back further. I'll just say that from, you know, what we put up there, it doesn't have to be that, but we want it set back further.
I appreciate your 32 years of citizenship, and I appreciate your passion, and you've given us an inch and a half of material. I thank you for that. Staff seems to think that we may not be able to find substance to work with your appeal. What, what would you do, what shall you do if, if this appeal is denied?
Do we have an appeal right to the town council? We're going to end up at town council. But can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
You've done this for a long time, and I think you're a stickler for the hillside-specific plan. There is a number of things that, I didn't read this, but everybody has it, that it doesn't comply. Staff says it complies, but it doesn't.
That's a tough one.
I mean, proof of access at the initial stage of the project, and here, we're in front of the planning commission. We shouldn't be here tonight. This should have been solved months ago, and we were not uncooperative. We were there, willing to work on this. We shouldn't be here tonight.
So Commissioner, I believe that when we begin to have our discussion with staff, that's the time to address those because we need to discuss with staff their interpretation.
I understand you want an up or down on this, is what you just said, and, you know, with respect to town council.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
I said, what's the next step? And you said town council.
I don't want to go to town council. I want to work with the applicant.
I misunderstood you.
You said, what's if you deny our appeal, what's the next step? We'll go to town council and talk to the council. I don't want to do that. I didn't want to come here tonight. I think this is something that should have been worked out at technical review and DRC and with staff and with the applicant.
Well, this is a tough call, and I thank you for your passion and your work.
All right. Commissioner Talasfor.
Thank you. Little background I'd like to know. So tell me a little, or tell us a little bit about, how, how long is the, I mean, someone lived next to you before the house was vacant and was bought, purchased by the, it was the dogs, thank you. But how did, how did the circulation work then? Were you there when other people lived in the house?
Yes.
Okay. So how did that circulation work then? Because it's been there a long, that house is, what, 53 years old?
Right.
So it's been there a long time, and you've lived there for eight years? Six?
Six.
Six. Okay, so you've had experience with this, so tell us how, because I, you know, I mean, it's sort of grandfathered in, in a way, isn't it? The circulation?
No.
The parking?
I don't mean to be disrespectful anyway, but no, it's not.
Okay, well, then tell, tell us a little bit about your experience with that circulation.
Can I first say, though, this is a new development. This is a clean slate. This is not a renovation of an existing house. It's been proposed as a new development. The house is being taken down, and we have an opportunity to do better. Our experience with the, our next-door neighbors, an elderly woman, the last name was Payne, was bedridden when we moved into the house. She had caretakers, and it was, it's sometimes fine and sometimes fairly intolerable because the family that was taking care of her while we, while she was living there grew from a couple of three people to probably eight or nine people. It's kind of a disaster at the end.
But address the circulation at that point. I mean, what were the, I mean, help us with the issues of that.
Big problem. The house would appear as a parking lot for quite some times. We had a derogatory term for the house that I won't, I won't, it's not a bad word, I just won't say it, it's not a nice characterization. But so it appeared as a parking lot at times. Cars would back up, back up our driveway. It was, it's basically the only way to turn around once you get several cars in there. We had parking issues. Can I just, can I follow up just one thing?
If it's something different?
It's a little different. When we bought our house, we knew this property was going to be redeveloped. We just wanted it done, we want it done right, and we want to improve the condition. I don't think we, either property should go on for the next who knows how many more years and deal with it in its existing condition when it comes to circulation, access, and parking.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner King?
Just on that point, the prior speaker said that the circulation, the access, and the parking will improve from what was there now. Do you agree or disagree with that?
Disagree. The house is going to get bigger. It has the capacity to house more people.
Okay, thank you.
It's going to get worse.
All right. Do we have any other questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
No, that was, unfortunately, that was right before his, is the, no, and actually, we can't even have this dialogue. That's, that's, that's not supposed to happen either. So I'm going to close the public portion of this and ask if my commissioners have questions of staff, comment, or would like to make a motion. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to deal with the easement for a second, so I'll direct this to the town attorney. As I understand it, and I've looked at the title reports, there is no question that there's an easement. The only question is how wide is the easement? So I think we all, you know, we all understand that there is a recorded easement. Everybody agrees to. What they don't agree on, well, what they also agree on is the legal description does not describe the width of the easement. Secondly, that easement has been used for 50-something years, so clearly it supports a vehicle. So my understanding is we don't deal with this issue. We just assume that they can resolve that, and if they can't resolve it, they can go to court. But we cannot resolve that issue. But I think it's unfair to say there's no easement. There's no argument by anybody that there is not a recorded easement. So I just wanted to make that clear unless the town attorney says I misspoke.
No, you're absolutely correct, and I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that. All parties agree there's an easement just as to the width and maybe even the location, but it has been there for a very, very long time.
All right. Do we have any other questions, comments? Commissioner Talasfor?
Could I ask staff about the number of cars that are necessary for this house?
Yes.
I mean, I see seven, I see seven cars drawn here.
So you're asking about required parking?
Yeah, let's, let's talk about that.
So town code requires two separately accessible parking spaces for each single-family residence. Town code also has requirements for secondary units. When the secondary unit was legalized, it was, it was constructed and then legalized in the late 80s, and that was legalized with one parking space. And so they're required, the required parking for this property is three separately accessible parking spaces. The hillside-specific plan talks about providing guest parking on-site when that is not available on the street, when there is no street parking available, anticipating that in developments as much as possible. Those are not required parking spaces, but it talks about providing four on-site for guest parking. But they are not required by town code. And so town code requirement that required parking not be provided in the front setback is only speaking to those parking spaces required by town code, which is the three parking spaces.
Commissioner Hanson?
So I did want to ask staff, I mean, obviously, this appeal letter came out with all this documentation literally within the last week. But I, you know, I'm hearing that, that the appellant feels that, that staff's analysis of this project's applicability and fitting within the hillside design guidelines, your analysis is in question, and I just wanted to know how you might respond to that. I mean, because there, the statements that are in this, this letter are, you know, are judgment issues about view and sightlines and whatnot, and, you know, so I just wanted to know, A, have you had a chance to review this, and B, you know, does staff have any reason to rethink their position about whether this applies to the hillside guidelines?
Staff reviewed that letter as well as the two previous letters, which predominantly included the same points of contention by their consultant. Staff provided two separate responses to each of those items of concern and did not feel it was necessary to provide additional responses to the same items that had already been addressed by staff.
Okay, thank you.
So you can refer to those letters that staff did include in the staff report to address those items.
So I know what's in here, but just for clarification for everyone, could you, this did go in front of the fire department? They have reviewed this?
Yes.
Their comments, based on what I read, are that they find the property to be accessible, they could get an emergency vehicle in and out of this property safely, and it meets all their requirements. Am I correct in what I read?
Correct.
Okay.
They looked at it over and over again throughout the development review committee process, and as additional concerns by the appellant were raised, they went out and looked at the site over again and continued to make that determination.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments, or does anyone want to venture a motion, or? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we deny the appeal. We find that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15303. Make the required findings as required by Section 2910903OE of the town code, and that's in Exhibit 2. Make the findings that the project complies with hillside development standards and guidelines in Exhibit 2. Make the finding that the project complies with the hillside-specific plan, also Exhibit 2. Make the required considerations as required by Section 292150 of the town code for granting approval of an architectural insight application, Exhibit 2, and approve architecture insight application S14027 with the conditions contained in Exhibit 3 and the development plans attached as Exhibit 14. That would be the motion.
Do we have any questions or comments? Commissioner Hanson?
I was going to second the motion.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion before we take a vote? All right. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Are there appeal rights, Mr. Paulson?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. The appeal must be filed within 10 days, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
All right. We are now going to consider item number five, an architectural insight application S-15-061, requesting approval to modify an architectural insight application to exceed the maximum floor area ratio. Thank you. And building height, a technical demolition of an existing single-story residence and construction of a new single-family residence located at 218 Forrester Road on property zoned HR-2 and 1/2, APN number 537-29-004. Are there any disclosures of any commissioners at this time? And has everyone had, I'm sorry, do you have a disclosure? Commissioner Badami?
Yes. I was viewing the property and made incidental contact with Chad and Erica Dyer.
Thank you. And has everybody had an opportunity to visit the property?
Yes.
I know, we understand, Mr. King. All right. Ms. Puga, I understand you're going to be giving us a report tonight.
Good evening, commissioners. In October of 2014, the planning commission approved a 922-square-foot addition to an existing 4,925-square-foot residence and a reduction in the size of an existing detached poolhouse and attached garage. The commission also granted an exception to the maximum allowable FAR. The approved project at 6,484 square feet exceeded the maximum allowable FAR by 84 square feet. During the building permit process, the approved Georgian architectural style of the home was revised to a modern farmhouse style. Pursuant to town code, a public hearing is required for the architectural revision. Subsequently thereafter, the project resulted in a technical demolition when more than 50% of the exterior wall area was erroneously removed. The applicant is now proposing to increase the total square footage of the additions to the residence from the approved size of 922 square feet to 964 square feet. The proposed additions to the first floor have increased from the approved size of 480 square feet to 522 square feet. The applicant is proposing to maintain the approved additions to the second floor and reduction in garage square footage. Lastly, the applicant is proposing to reduce the poolhouse from the approved size of 222 square feet to 160 square feet. approved size of 222 square feet to 160 square feet. At 5,889 square feet, the revised project would result in the second-largest home in the immediate neighborhood and largest FAR in the immediate neighborhood, including the detached poolhouse and garage floor area. The proposal would be 646 square feet, 64 square feet larger than the allowable floor area. The plans were reviewed by the town's consulting architect. Given the large lots and variety of home styles, the consulting architect felt that the revised architecture would be consistent with the mix of styles in the immediate neighborhood. The consulting architect had six recommendations, of which the applicant has addressed to the satisfaction of the consultant. The final recommendation, which is recommendation number one in his report, Exhibit 6, is asking the Planning Commission to provide direction to the applicant for the proposed metal roofing. The second part of the proposal is a request to exceed the maximum allowed building height pursuant to the Hillside development standards and guidelines. The height of the existing residence is 26 feet 1/2 inches. While the application is a technical demolition, the existing roof of the entire structure has been maintained. All proposed roof additions will meet the maximum allowed height of 25 feet and would not increase the height of the existing structure. There is one desk item before you this evening, which is, pardon me, from staff, which states that the current elevations contained in Exhibit 8 do not accurately represent the modification to the design to use siding materials for all elevations of the residence. If the approved plans are approved by the Planning Commission tonight, the plans would be revised prior to the building permit supplemental to reflect the design modification. The project is in compliance with the Hillside development standards and guidelines, except for the request to exceed the maximum allowed floor area and building height. The applicant's request to revise the architectural style would be consistent with the homes in the immediate neighborhood. While the project is a technical demolition, the existing roof of the structure has been maintained, and the proposed roof additions would meet the maximum allowed height. Staff recommends that the application be approved subject to the attached conditions. This completes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Commissioner Talisfor, then Commissioner Hanson.
Yep. Is there a materials board here tonight?
The applicant will have one.
Okay. And which page, on which elevation are you referring to, that the desk, is the desk item referring to?
So the desk item is referring to sheets A31. Currently, on the front-facing garage elevation, they're proposing stucco, which has been revised to the siding materials consistent with...
With the house?
Yes. So all elevations along the right, left, front, and part of the rear show areas of stucco, and those have been since revised to complete siding.
Commissioner Hanson?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood this. Relative to the approval that was made by the Planning Commission in October 2014, the actual square footage net of the property isn't going to change from that approval time, although I realize that what was approved was in excess of the FAR that was allowed.
So it's actually decreased from what was approved. The approved size exceeded their allowable FAR by 84 square feet, and now they're proposing to exceed it by 64 square feet.
Okay. And the way it looked like they were doing it is by chopping out enough of the poolhouse to do that. Now, I visited the property, and they obviously, they haven't done that yet, because I could see that it's not 160 square feet. So this is going to happen if this is approved. So then, the real thing that's bringing this back to the Planning Commission is the erroneous demolition of the house.
So it's actually two components. The first component is the revision to the architectural style. That occurred first in early July, and staff had notified the applicant that that revision would require a planning commission, to which they agreed to. Subsequently, in August is when the project resulted in a technical demolition. But both instances would have required planning commission review.
And I was struck by the comment about erroneously removing the walls to keep at the residence. I mean, is that something that happens frequently? It seems like really unusual and erroneous seemed like a relatively soft word to describe it relative to an approval. I mean, is there going to be some kind of penalty for violating the terms of the permit that they were given?
So that there is a penalty, and that penalty is double the application fee.
Commissioner Badami?
I would like a confirmation from staff that the prior approval of the additional square footage, is that a given the second time around? Because we technically have a new architecture plan in front of us. So I would think that we're reviewing the site architecture and square footage all over again. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That being said, I do have a question with the staff report on page eight with the last sentence, and it reads that the project meets the conditions to exceed the FAR, and it refers to Exhibit 2. And Exhibit 2 lists nine conditions and identifies condition number eight, a cellar, is not being met. The previous plan had a cellar, so we were able to make the exception based on the findings. We no longer have a cellar. So can you elaborate on your findings that this meets the conditions to exceed the FAR per Exhibit 2?
Sure. So it meets all of the other, condition number one, that it's not visible from a viewing platform, condition two, that there are no significant impacts to protected trees, wildlife, or habitat. There's no unnecessary grading. Any grading that's proposed meets the Hillside development standards and guidelines. They're meeting the Title 24 energy efficiency. So staff felt that based on those conditions, that they would be able to support the proposed exception to the FAR.
All right. My concern is that on page 29 of the Hillside design guidelines, that it states that all nine conditions need to be met for a FAR exception. That would be my concern. Thank you.
I want to ask a quick question, please, just so I understand the, and my other commissioners understand the process of how this came in front of us. So the applicant came to you with the architectural revised style. Is that correct?
That's correct, and that was during the building permit process.
But it was during building inspection that it was discovered that they had exceeded the amount, percentage of demolition, and that was brought to you by your inspectors? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it just kind of coincided at the same time?
They were about a month apart.
All right. Commissioner Talisfor?
Right. But to that point, it says in the staff report, however, the roof, the 50-foot roof line has remained. So is that, is that how we, is that how the town looks at?
I'm sorry, could you elaborate on that?
Could I elaborate on it? It's just that what, I've never heard that, because technical demolition, 50% of the walls have to be left, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But in this case, those were taken out, but 50% of the roof line. So it reads to me like, even though the wall was removed, because they have the roof there, that counts as something. I didn't understand the relationship. Why is that? Help me understand what you meant by that.
So what the roof is referring to is that the existing home is non-conforming in regards to height. The existing home exceeds the allowed height at 26 feet 1 1/2 inches. So because of that, and because of the code and interpretation of a technical demolition and consideration of a new home, the application has to ask for a request to exceed the allowed building height. During the technical demolition, while the walls were removed, the roof itself was maintained. Just the materials were taken off.
Okay. All right. So I just want to get back, though, if we could go back to, and this is about the siding on the house and the way it's going to look and what we see here. A3.1, actually, it's A3.2. So I see bat and board, if I'm looking at this correctly, as being horizontal in some sections. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And is that going to be horizontal in other places? Because the other, the other bat and board is vertical.
It's my understanding it will be horizontal going across, but the applicant in their presentation has included the revised elevations for your review.
Oh, all right. Fine. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
It's probably just a semantics issue, but, you know, with these drawings of the existing and the proposed, there isn't any existing, I mean, visiting the property, the entire thing is, and all there is is wood frame and framing there now. So there isn't really any existing to go by, because that doesn't exist anymore.
That's correct. So what they've provided to you was the original structure and the existing.
What their plans were, that were approved, that were followed anyways, right?
No, so they're actually showing you the existing structure before any plans were submitted.
Oh, yeah, before anything happened. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, Ms. Puga. So we will now give the applicant 10 minutes to address the commission. Ms. Worsima, I always mess up your last name. I'm so sorry.
Worsima. It's okay. I know, it's a lot of vowels and not a common name. Let me just make sure I know how to work this thing. It's a new remote, I think. No problem.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for taking a relook at this for a couple reasons. As Jocelyn mentioned, the first reason is we had a shift in change of aesthetic. This was brought about purely from a budget standpoint. We needed to cut greater than 25% out of the budget that was determined by competitive bidding and a contractor that had been being worked with for quite some time. That contractor was subsequently during the budget revisions not retained as the contractor, and a new contractor was assigned to the project. During that month, when the new contractor was assigned to the project, we netted a result from an inspection by Mr. Hildebrandt, I believe, that qualified us for a technical review. The original technical review demo affidavit was signed by the original contractor and was not picked up in the processing of changing from the original contractor to the contractor that was subsequently chosen. The technical demolition, I don't think the term erroneous is actually used lightly at all. There was a different contractor assigned, again, that signed the original technical demo affidavit, and then, secondly, no structural walls were actually removed. So if you're familiar with a technical demo, if you don't maintain the exterior siding, then you have to retain the sheet rock on the inside, not the structural walls. So no walls actually were removed, purely the sheet rock and the sheathing on the outside of the building. Upon demolition of the building, it was discovered that the sheathing of the building was actually non-existent in certain areas, and wherever there was plywood, which is normally considered a structural shear member, was actually maintained on the building. So it's a very, very narrow definition for us on what qualified as a technical demo, and really had to do with the fact that because we removed additional, because we removed sheathing on the outside of the building as well as sheet rock on the inside, we qualified as a technical demo. No walls, structural members, et cetera, were removed. You can see those when you go to the site today. So that kind of clarifies how we ended up as a technical demo for you. Again, we ended up bringing an aesthetic change to the town because of budget. About 25%, the budget had to be cut out in order to make this project get off the ground. One of those things was the reduction of the cellar. The cellar is never included in the square footage of the project, to answer your question originally, Commissioner Badami, in that it doesn't count as square footage. So the numbers have to do with habitable above-grade square footage only and not cellar. As a reminder, this project is an existing house. For the most part, the demo stayed the same, with the exception that sheetrock, and the proposed both upper and level floor plan demo generally remained the same, with the exception of some structural work on the inside, specifically at the stair, to accommodate a less expensive structural center on the house. Site plan essentially remains the same. We have the detached poolhouse. We have the main house, the area of additions where the hatched areas are at the front to create a few bumpouts, at the back to create some additional bedrooms for kids. The slight increase that you see, I think it's around 20 square feet on the main floor plan, is the net result of extending this back bumpout out a little bit to accommodate some better trim details with the new siding material. As a reminder, because I figured you guys would want to have a reminder, since you're just looking at stick framing out there, this was the existing residence, a dated, although these pictures make it look kind of pretty. The front of the house was a pretty sheer two-story facade with very skinny, tall, I'm sure not to be approved today, oops, sorry, sheer roof structure and entry structure at the front. What you're seeing here is the back of the house, where the majority of the addition is occurring, and then the poolhouse. Proposed site plan just shows you again where those, the big changes are happening at the back of the house, kind of in a protected area. So originally, front elevation you saw in the previous picture, there was brick across this facade, had a very extruded kind of pseudo-colonial, not quite accurate, description, but aesthetic, very dated. The proposed addition went into a Georgian kind of pseudo-French country style. What made this particular proposal work was the attention to detailing materials. So there was a lot of cast stone detailing, coining, some structural work at the roof to bring the roof in to hips, some barrel vaults, barrel windows, everything else. All these things are spendy little items, so they were reduced, taken away in order to make the project affordable. We didn't want to end up with a purely extruded boxy stucco facade, so we decided to look at re-siding the house in materials that would be appropriate for the existing form of the house. So we maintain the existing ridge and roof structure, as you can see, existing kind of roof structure everywhere, but added on at our bays the same way we had originally, but not with a hip, with the typical shed style that you see in kind of a modern farmhouse aesthetic. This gets us some nice texture on the facade with a board and batten, better articulated windows that are more cost-effective and not custom, with an arch top and a metal roof. Originally proposed was to mix, again, for budget reasons, siding and the board and batten, and some horizontal siding on the sides of the house. And what we have done is followed Larry Cannon's suggestion, after getting some better budgeting and pricing, to continue the board and batten consistently around the whole facade, every facade, sides, back, other side. Just as a reminder, we are reducing our square footage from what was originally approved by you, and a lot of that is happening by reducing kind of that poolhouse to be more of an open-covered pavilion, which also helps us to address our budget concerns. So again, just a reminder of what we did to reduce budget concerns. Removed arch windows, removed the natural stone, removed the cast stone detailing, did not affect structurally roof lines and other modifications that were structural on the inside, limited landscape effort, and then a modification across the board from all finishes. The house is proposed to be board and batten, and in a style that works with the existing open gable roofs on the house, and then adding some additional shed details. These are just some examples for you to understand the texture of the siding and the look that's kind of being proposed. We had metal roofs proposed originally on the approved application, and those were going to be at all of the sheds and lower roofs, as well as all of the back new construction roofs. These are examples of the type of darker gray metal roof that we are proposing on this. Some of these even have the board and batten. The windows proposed are going to be a black licorice-colored geldwin aluminum clad wood window, wood interior, aluminum clad exterior. So these are just some examples of that. Probably most notably, this example down here would be, I think, most consistent with the current proposal in terms of board and batten, metal roof, some exposed trim details, paired posts, et cetera, and the dark windows. Our current materials palette is provided, again, the board and batten with wood trim around the metal clad windows, and then the metal standing seam roof for further articulation. All of those more than meet the LRV, so we're sticking with all of that. Let's see, consulting architects, comments and recommendations that we made sure we maintained. I think Jocelyn kind of already went through this, but we have addressed all of those concerned, and for the most part, agreed to all of them. The desk item that you have has to do with the fact that when the original proposal was submitted, we did have stucco, as shown on the drawings that you see behind you, and that was, again, a budget restriction, but we have been able to accommodate the board and batten consistent throughout the home on the outside. I guess that's it for right now.
All right. Commissioner Badami, then Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you, Ms. Worsima, especially for your earlier...
especially for your earlier point that the cellar square footage does not count towards the FAR. However, can you still explain to me why you can't stay within the FAR?
Yes, the cellar square footage originally contained spaces in it that were additional rec room spaces, media room space, and kind of a gym space and another guest bedroom for in-laws to stay. When we removed that, we relocated and converted an existing living room into the new media room and maintained the number of bedrooms. The client has four small children, needs a bedroom for each of them. So a large part of the addition of this home is to accommodate bedrooms for each of the kids that are consistent with the ones that are there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
I was curious about the metal roof. I mean, I know that you responded to the architect's concerns, but in driving through the neighborhood, I didn't notice any other. There was one home that had a metal cap and one portion of its roof that I saw. And maybe I didn't see every house in the neighborhood, but I was just curious what, you know, why go with that, you know, when it was so, it is different than the rest of the neighborhood.
Well, I would say that in driving through the rest of the neighborhood, you probably noticed that it was inconsistent in character. And Larry Cannon even brought that up in his write-up, that each home is unique in its own interpretation of style with a varying mix of, you know, anything from giant craftsmen to French colonial to Italianate out in that neighborhood. So a metal roof, especially with the standing seam, is consistent with the character of kind of this modern farmhouse interpretation that we're doing. The modern farmhouse style fits with the existing and original bulk and mass of the house that we are maintaining. And I believe we're actually adding to it and creating a softer approach and a more updated facade that's actually more friendly to the neighborhood and kind of a pedestrian level by adding the box bay bump outs on that that metal roof would also be part of.
So what you're saying is the board and batten siding has been used in many other instances with a standing metal seam roof?
Correct, and tried to provide you with a couple images. Let me go back to that metal roof one. So here's some examples of all metal roof houses. I mean, the one on the top right is more modern, but still has gabled roof ends. It's a non-reflective metal roof. It's a dark gray, it has an LRV of, it has an LRV of 19.06.
Commissioner Taussfor, then Commissioner Badami.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry you didn't bring the actual materials here tonight. It's really helpful to see them.
I have a piece of the metal, if that's what you're concerned about.
That'd be great.
Okay. Same as last time, I brought it for you again.
Thank you for that. It's not as gray as I thought it was going to be. I mean, I'm looking at it in light and...
It's the same gray you had last time. And if you note, the LRV rating is 19.06. I think the accepted current LRV rating is 30.
So one of the, in the general plan, when we look, well, let me back it up. This is, this subdivision, although there are many styles there, does have really some elements that join all of the houses together. Stucco, roof tiles, either Spanish, cement, composite, it had, or brick, it has stone. And there are not just one, but there, in the general plan, there are three guidelines that speak to one goal, which is to keep subdivisions and neighborhoods in harmony with each other. So when I look at your building, and because it's so, because this neighborhood is so co-joined with all that, with all of those elements I just talked about, even though the styles are different, yours, it really stands out. And it stands out, not to me in the best form. I'm not saying it's not a nicely designed home. I'm just not sure it fits in harmony here. One thing that would stand out about it would be that metal roof and the batten board. And so when you look at it, even on the page here, you see a lot of lines. And I'm just wondering, could that roof, either the form be softened or changed to be more gable? Or, right now, it looks pretty heavy coming down on, and we're going to see a lot of it.
I think the drawing looks heavy because you see the lines of the articulated board and batten. But I encourage you to look at the images where you see board and batten.
But I'm not seeing that style there. All of those homes that you showed as examples don't have the same roof line.
Actually, they have very similar roof lines. There's open gables, see the one where it says windows right here, where we have the black windows and an open gable effect.
But that's at a gable, and, I mean, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the metal roof. I'm seeing the side of it.
Like the top image?
Right.
So, you know, as I stated, we're trying to maintain the existing roof and the existing body of the structure of the home. We had mixed in our previously approved submission a combination of comp shingle, I believe, and metal roof on the previous one, which I actually think if you kind of do an analysis of the style of the home was a bit more of a bastardized version of materials. And I would argue that that's probably true for the majority of the neighborhood. The neighborhood is not consistent in character. And Larry Cannon kind of spoke to that, I think, in his review.
But what it has in character are the materials. The predominant materials, you can't argue that, I wouldn't think. There's a lot of stucco on those homes. They're adorned with wood, they're adorned with stone, they're adorned with brick. But the majority, all of the homes are stuccoed. That's just what I'm seeing here. And I'm going by what we have in front of us as far as what residential design guidelines we have and how, you know, we would like to maintain harmony within the neighborhoods. And that is how I'm evaluating this at this point. Thank you.
Commissioner Badami. Have you shared your new plans with the neighbors and do you have their support? Because it's a significant departure from the earlier approval.
So to my knowledge, my client has seen some of their neighbors, and there is not a complaint against it.
They've seen their neighbors, that they've actually communicated with them and shown them the plans?
I believe so. I just, I wasn't participating in any of those meetings.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? All right, thank you. We don't have any other speaker cards for this item. If you want to have five more minutes, you certainly can.
I guess I'll just, I'll just take a moment to re-articulate that we're, you know, we're here for two reasons. The aesthetic change due to a budget drive and the attempt to actually make a better home with a reduced budget. And that the quality of materials and character that we're driving for are actually consistent or more than with what you see in the neighborhood. And also that, you know, the technical demo did result in us being here as well. But we have actually reduced the amount of square footage that was previously approved. I think that our care in articulating the materials in the detail is actually something that's softer, might not appear that way in a black and white drawing with a lot of stripes on it, because board and batten, when you draw them, looks like stripes as opposed to soft stucco. But the home in my mind does indeed fit the neighborhood because the neighborhood's eclectic. There's brick houses, there's stucco houses, there's some wood shingles on the lower left-hand side. There's some siding, there's a very big mix. And like I said again, Larry Cannon kind of spoke to that. Our intent to have the metal roof is something that helps this house actually stand out as a house of character that also has a level of materials that, as Larry calls it, Larry Cannon, Cannon Group calls it, that's consistent with the level of materials and caliber of the neighborhood. I guess that's it.
All right, go back. Commissioner Taussfor.
Yeah, one question I did forget to ask. What is the, what color are you painting the house?
It's the same gray color that was previously, the same gray beige that was previously approved.
I have, I don't remember.
More than meets the LRV, it's kind of a mid-tone color, mid-tone grayish.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
The change from stucco to board and batten, was that an economic decision?
Absolutely. When we decided to maintain the original roof and not, let me go back to that image, and not change the roof pitch to be something, here we go. I'd like you to think about this drawing. Where you can see we've articulated the brick just in the corner as a way to not make the drawing look too heavy. If we rip this off and we just have this whole mass of stucco with the metal roof, it's a very extruded building, it's boxy and very plain and doesn't fit within the design guidelines. Budget concerns required us to keep the existing roof, which means none of the hipped portions stayed, none of the barrel vaults stayed going in, none of the arched windows stayed. So we were required to kind of square or true up the building, which brought it actually back to more its original character without having these kind of extruded elements and kind of getting ourselves some bump outs that gave the house some shadow lines and some detail both at the front and the rear. So rather than having that be just a giant, like I said, stucco box, we opted for the board and batten, which was more cost-effective than shingles or siding, but also added some texture to a large, large building. When we, when we removed, we removed all the coining and the cast stone and those details, those are the things that make the stucco kind of sing and be pretty. Because this is a big house, big two-story extrusion. It's not a little low-slung Spanish bungalow with stucco and no trim details. So we removed all that from a budget standpoint. And from a budget standpoint, I'm talking about to the tune of half a million dollars of removal of cast stone and stone details and arched windows. No light little budget re-mo here. That really required us to relook at the building and also try to maintain some of its existing structural integrity.
Commissioner Kane.
I don't mean to be flip, it just occurs to me how often you mention budget. You could save more money by making it smaller and complying with the FAR. Is that a thought?
As was stated in our original approved and in our current proposal, we needed rooms for the large family. And the addition has been done thoughtfully at the rear of the home. The addition at the front, additions at the front of the home are more for curb appeal and aesthetic. We did indeed remove the cellar, and we are indeed removing additional square footage at the pool cabana.
Well, they don't affect FAR. I'm just wondering if you can find a way to get in compliance?
No.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? No? All right, thank you. Now I ask if any of my Commissioners have any questions of staff, Commissioner Kane, Commissioner Hanson, and Commissioner O'Donnell.
I have a question for Commissioner Badami. I want to make sure I understood you. You were talking to staff and said the reason we should give the exception, and you referred to Exhibit 2 and that they complied with six of those provisions?
That is not correct, Commissioner Kane. I said they did not comply with the nine provisions for a FAR exception. They are not in compliance with Provision Number Eight, that they include a cellar. And when you read the Hillside Design Guidelines on Page 29, it has wording that's probably a little bit more restrictive than the Exhibit 2 that we've been provided. And it lists all nine, but it prefaces it with a sentence that says, "The Town Council or Planning Commission may approve residential projects greater than the maximum allowed floor area, but is not guaranteed when all of the following conditions apply." We don't have a cellar, we had a cellar previously.
Yeah, I misunderstood. I thought you were implying that there were only six on the page. And I turned the page and saw the other three. I went to Page 29 and I saw nine. And you're saying there's not compliance with all nine?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, and then Commissioner O'Donnell.
I realize that due to the nature of this particular application, we don't get the normal analysis, but I was wondering about the other houses in the neighborhood. I mean, I could see them driving through the neighborhood, but I mean, are there other houses in the neighborhood that are outside of the FAR or also outside of the height limitation?
I don't have that information, Andy. It would require us to do additional research on that.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, I'd just like to hear staff's response to this nine points because, as read to us at least, it says all nine have to be satisfied. And I think it's already been stated that in fact, only eight of them are arguably satisfied. So if it's as clear as it appears to be in reading, I'm just wondering, are we missing something there?
I had referred to the planning manager to answer that.
You're not missing something, so that, you know, generally when we're looking at new houses where they're starting and they want, if someone came in and they wanted to exceed the FAR with just above-ground mass, we would be directing them to pursuant to that condition or finding to add a cellar element so they could reduce the above-ground mass and come into compliance. With an existing house, it becomes a little more challenging. Previously, they were proposing a cellar. And so they technically, and I don't remember, Jocelyn may remember, the square footage of that square footage of cellar, which doesn't count as FAR. But just the fact of adding that and it's increased grading, if that is more important than to allow the 64 additional square feet, then that's something the Commission certainly could deal with.
But you're basically saying, if I understand it, that the previous house, while the new one is 64 square feet more, in fact, it's basically the same with the addition of 64 feet. So if we simply stayed with the original design, we've already approved that. So what we're really asking ourselves here is can we approve, I mean, you can look at it ad initio, which it is. It's starting all over again. But if you say, well, wait a minute, we already approved this, and what they're asking us for is to add 64 feet. And then, if you run into this nine points, I'm trying to find out, is there a solution to the issue? Because is the nine-point requirement a killer? And I, you know, I shudder to think that it is, but it sure sounds like it.
Commissioner Badami, then Commissioner Kane.
Well, I would offer a solution, that they stay within the FAR and trim the 64 square feet.
Well, let me just find out again. If they trim the 64 feet, are they within the FAR?
Correct.
Okay. So it's a 64-square-foot problem, is what we're really saying. Okay, thank you, it's clear to me now.
Commissioner Kane.
It's a compliance problem. And as I understand it, Counselor, this is de novo. So we are starting from scratch. Not everybody knows that, Tom, so I thought I'd... It's an opportunity to get within compliance. And I don't, I'm not really following why staff didn't take this opportunity to get something that was out of compliance back in up, back into compliance. That's, we're supposed to protect the town, we're supposed to protect the neighborhood, we have an opportunity to back the standards and guidelines, and we're not taking it. And I'm not clear on why we're not taking it.
That's clearly the Commission's prerogative. If they believe that the 64 square feet without the cellar is more intrusive than the 84 square feet that it previously was exceeding the FAR by with the 2,000-plus-square-foot cellar, then that is definitely something the Commission can decide.
If I understand you correctly, you say that the, what we approved before is 84 feet over the FAR. So if we stayed with the original, we're 84 feet over. If we go with this, we're 64 feet over. And unless you say, well, wait a minute, it's a brand-new application, let's go back to the drawing board, what you're really saying is let's get rid of the whole thing that is over the FAR, whether it's 84 or whether it's 64, whatever it is. So if one were to make that decision, we would have to be clear that we're not just saying, no, 64. We're saying as if, as has been pointed out, is a, we get to look at the whole thing, as you say, de novo. Then we have to be very clear that you're not going back to the 84 feet.
That is a good point. And if I can just, this is my memory from the conversation last time, is that we did look at these points in discussing exceeding the FAR, because obviously we're all very sensitive to that. And it was the fact that, you know, they were including that cellar that I believe in the conversation was a reason that we justified understanding going over the FAR. So I am looking at this all new. I don't know about my fellow Commissioners, but I'm looking at this brand-new, not comparing it, and looking at those nine points. So that is how I recall it and how I'm approaching this today, just for my own memory and reference. Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to make the comment that I see that we're looking at a different problem, so you can't compare apples to apples because... problem, so you can't compare apples to apples because of the events that have transpired and because of the way the proposal was when you guys first evaluated it versus now. But I mean, and, you know, similar to some other proposals we've listened to, I mean, there are some ways to reduce square footage, and it's not a lot. I mean, the pool house, if it, you know, wasn't there, would obviously satisfy it. I mean, it certainly, there must be other ways to think about it.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I think we're all mindful of the time and expense that's involved in this project. And I guess what I'm wondering is if we were to say, look, the way you've presented it and the fact that we don't make the nine because we no longer have the cellar, we're going to require you to go back and stay within the FAR. And as you say, to us, it looks like you could do that. Now, I, you know, but I'm just wondering, if that's the case, then we're really saying we want some new plans. And I'm just wondering if it would be possible to reopen the public comment part of the public hearing for the limited purpose of finding out, there are only two choices that I can see for the applicant. That is either to say, fine, I'm going to appeal it, I guess, or to say, I'd like to go back and see if I can come up with essentially the 64, because as long as we stay with this submittable, it is 64, understanding if we go back to the other approved, it's 84. And we've made that clear. But I would be greatly helped if I knew what the applicant might say to that, because we will have a decision before us as we ask for a continuance for her to deal with this problem, or whether she's basically going to say, I've got to do it this way, and therefore, we just want to appeal. So I don't know if anybody joins me in that, but I'd like to know what her position is.
Commissioner Kane?
I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell. We have alternatives, 1, 2, and 3. And 1 is approved, 2 is deny, and 3 is continue the application to a date certain with direction of staff and the applicant for desired revisions. I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell to the extent that I wouldn't want to waste time making such a motion unless the applicant was willing to do that. And so maybe that's why we should reopen the hearing for the applicant.
I don't disagree, but what I would like to do is there's more than just this item on this list. So I'm going to go through a couple of the other items. So if we are going to open and we have other questions of the applicant, we address all of them. So first, let's talk about the building height. While it is asking for an exception for the building height, that's the existing roof. Personally, I don't have a problem with that. I'm not going to ask them to tear out the existing roof to meet the 25 feet. It's the existing roof. So I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners if we're in agreement on that item, and that is not going to be a contentious issue as we move forward and look at this.
I agree.
Okay. The next item is the technical demolition, which really, I guess, we can't do anything about because unfortunately, the contractor did it. So I think we're all in agreement with that. And then the next item, other than the FAR, is the revision to the architectural style. So we've done a significant change to the architectural style. I'd like to get my fellow commissioners' take on their feeling towards architectural style. Do we agree with this? Do we feel if we were going to ask for changes, does the architectural style fall into those changes? I'd like to get your comments on that, anybody.
I like door number two. I don't know what that means, you know? The applicant gets to present what they want, but the third one seems harsh compared to the second one, Plan B.
Ms. Henson?
I was going to say, you know, I think a lot of people might like, you know, door number two better than door number three, but as the applicant has said, it is driven by budget considerations, and, you know, we can't force them to address that. So that being the case, I rely on the, you know, the opinions from the architectural consultant that we have, who basically didn't find any major problems that weren't addressed by the applicant. So I could be okay with that.
Okay.
And I think everybody heard from me, and I, it's the choice of materials, it will stand out, it is quite different. And I know Mr. Cannon has his opinion, but architecture, as we know, sometimes is subjective. And I will stand behind the fact that this, when this subdivision was put in, it really was put in with the thought of using heavily stuccoed area and adorning the stone, adorning the brick, adorning the wood. But it definitely is prevalent, and it's what gives that neighborhood the character that it has. And so although I could appreciate the modern farmhouse look, I'm just not sure that it goes here. I do think it will stand out. I'm disappointed not to actually have a sample of the paint, because I think maybe that could have changed my mind about how I feel about it. It doesn't, as long as it's not going to be white, I could see that if it was dark, that the lines wouldn't stand out. We just approved something over on Benedict that I happened to drive by, and it was with a metal seamed roof, dark, with white batten boarding, and it stands out from that neighborhood, not in a good way. And it's a cute house, but just not in that neighborhood. And that neighborhood has a character that this really doesn't. And as I told, as I said, I'm not making this up, but this is design guidelines that we have to adhere to in general plan, and it's all about harmony and consistency in neighborhoods. So that's where I stand.
Is that it?
I have no problem with it.
Commissioner O'Damie?
I'm uncomfortable with the design. I feel that it may not integrate with the neighborhood, and it's somewhat out of character. But what I would like to see is some letters of support from the neighbors so that I actually know that they saw the new design plans, because some of these subdivisions, they actually have architecture and site approval committees. And I don't know if one exists for this neighborhood, or if staff has any way of knowing if there's CCNRs that were recorded for this neighborhood, that maybe there is such a committee that might exist. If so, if we approve the architecture and there was a problem with the neighborhood where they have such a committee, would we be participating in a contract violation?
It's staff's understanding there's no architectural review board for this subdivision.
Thank you.
So, being the last one, I would also like to see some letters, I believe, from the neighborhood. I feel like this is going to contrast greatly with the other homes in the neighborhood, and I spend a lot of time walking around and looking at it. So I'm certainly not going to sit and say, change it, but I would very much like to see that there's neighborhood has looked at it and said, yes, we like it. I think we've seen from earlier applications that your neighbors weighed very heavily. And so that would be my request. So at that, if everyone's comfortable, I'm going to go ahead and reopen the public portion to ask the applicant to come back up to see if we want to move to a date certain for some changes or how she would like to respond. So you're welcome to please come back on up to the podium.
I do know from speaking with my client, Erica Dyer, that the neighbors were shocked that we were coming back here. They couldn't understand why. I know they've seen the plans, I know they've seen materials out there. I know that they've, there's been no formal meeting, no getting of letters, but there was more, a lack of understanding about why we were coming back here. So while I don't come here today with a bunch of letters with positive neighborhood support, I certainly don't come here with a stockpile of neighbors knocking at the door saying, no way. In fact, we have people saying, why is it being held up? Keep it moving. We're happy that someone is doing something in the neighborhood. I don't know if staff can pull our previous proposal so that Commissioner Talisfor can see the paint color, but we're anticipating kind of the same grage color as supported by the LRV, which by the way, is significantly darker than any of the houses in our immediate neighborhood that do not meet the current LRV standards, I would just like to point out. I'd also like to point out that we did previously approve a house that was bigger than this one. And some consistency is, I think, just as important. I understand that we're looking at a new application. If we're looking at a new application, then looking at the previous facade in comparison with the current one, I'm not sure is fair, frankly, to my client, slightly. I'd just like to point that out, that if we're going to be consistent, we should be consistent across the board. I do encourage, as an architect that brings a lot of projects forward to the town, that, you know, to have a previously approved project and come back because of some budget constraints with actually what I believe as an architect is a better proposal than the original proposal in terms of maintaining the existing integrity of the home is something that should be taken into great consideration. I think the other thing that should be taken into consideration with the 64 square feet is that we have in this proposal reduced the size of the secondary dwelling, or it's not secondary dwelling, sorry, the secondary structure, the pool cabana. It's not a secondary dwelling, sorry about that. And frankly, in Hillside, I think we'd be more concerned with digging a giant basement underneath the house to the tune of 1,900 square feet. I like the idea of getting rid of the cellar and not doing that additional grading and drainage requirements, and just having a couple bump outs that move from being 18 inches deep to being 24 inches deep.
Yeah, I'm actually going to have to, so, we're kind of limited on what, when we reopen it, what I'm allowed to do. So really specifically, we were asking if you want to continue it, to see if you can bring the FAR in range and give some letters from the neighbors, and if you do, we'd like to set a date certain.
I'd rather condition it, we're construction underway with winter coming, and so I'd rather say if, you know, if there's concern over the 60 square feet, I'll take the 60 square feet out of the pool house right now.
So if we bring it in line with the FAR, do we feel as a commission that we need to come back and see this?
I think we could vote on this, because as I heard, it is not clear to me whether this will pass or not.
Right.
It's a close question, and hearing what the architect is saying, it is a close question, and we ought to find out, I think.
I'd also like to respond to Commissioner Talisfor's comments about the metal roof.
Well, actually, with the opening of this, I have to say very, the attorney has just told me, I have to say very specific as to why we reopened it, and it was really specifically for the square footage.
Okay.
I thought it was for aesthetic also.
I actually thought that that went more away, it was more for the FAR was very specifically why I opened it, because we do that to double see it, to check with a date certain. So if we are, we have heard what you said with the square footage.
As I understand it, the applicant, instead of wanting to come back with a redesign, said that they would be fine if the motion was to approve this, that they would meet FAR by just amending the plans to show that. And if you're okay with that, with the motion to prove it, then that could be done, and staff would do that.
So I think I'm going to go ahead and close the public portion, because it sounds like that was addressed. And I would turn to my commissioners again and see if there are any other comments or if anyone wants to venture a motion with the new information. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll try a motion, because I don't know where we're going to be, but I will make the recommendation that we approve the application subject to, however, some conditions, which I will just recite, but overriding that, and I want to make sure I say it upfront, that the plans will have to be reduced by the required, by the square footage, which is over the FAR, which I understand would be 64, but that's not the critical issue. Whatever it is, it's got to be reduced so it's no longer over the FAR. And with that being a condition, we would find that the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to 15303, see Exhibit 2. We make the required findings required by the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines for granting an exemption, no, we wouldn't do that. Yes, for granting an exception to the maximum allowed square foot area greater than 5,000 square feet in gross floor area, that's Exhibit 2. Make the required findings required by the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines for granting an exception to the maximum allowed height of 25 feet, see Exhibit 2. Make a finding that the exceptions to the maximum floor area and building height, the project complies with the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines and Hillside Specific Plan, Exhibit 2. Make the required considerations as required by Section 292150, the counteux of the Town Code, for granting approval of an architectural site application, also Exhibit 2. Approve architecture and site application, S15061, with conditions contained in Exhibit 3 and development plans attached as Exhibit 8. I might also add for an additional consideration, well, an initial condition, which hopefully would address Commissioner Talisfor's concern, that the staff approve the gray color of the building so that it would be, I think Commissioner Talisfor was interested in making sure it's dark enough and that the particular sample we had, in her judgment, was not dark enough, so it would be darker than that as approved by the staff. So that would be the motion.
All right. I will actually second the motion. Do we have any other comments or questions? Commissioner Kane?
Commissioner Talisfor, you've spoken at length about compatibility and fit in the neighborhood. The motion as it's proposed, does that satisfactorily address your concerns of neighborhood compatibility?
It really, it really doesn't. However, and it's really hard, because I won't be, I can't see anything. And it's hard for me to approve something I can't see, and I can't see the color, and you know that on houses, that's extremely important. So, however, to move this along, I did say, and I do think that would, it would work, that if the color of the roof and the siding of the paint were dark enough, it probably would be subtle enough not to stand out in a very way that would take away from the rest of the neighborhood. So with that, I thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. I would like to see that paint, and I know the staff would let me see it, if that's okay when it's decided on.
Yeah, we can...
Notify me.
Notify you and show you the previously approved color, which I believe the architect said was what they were looking at, and we can confirm that.
Okay, thank you very much. And the roof as well? Okay.
And does that mean yes at this time?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Damie, you had your hand up?
Would the maker of the motion consider adding as a condition of approval that the applicant provide letters of support from the neighbors to staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
And a second.
I would also support that. Do we have any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor? Aye? All right, passes unanimously. Are there any appeal rights?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal that decision to the Town Council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
We are going to take a very quick break, and we'll be back in about five minutes.
Reopening the Planning Commission meeting, and we are now on to item number six. Item number six is a public hearing to consider the adoption of amendments to Chapter 2, Constraints Analysis and Site Selection, and Chapter 5, Architecture Design.
May I ask the chair one question?
Mm-hmm.
Since seven seems to be cut and dried, and six does not...
You want to do a switch-up?
I would request the chair to consider hearing seven before six.
Yeah, I would consider that, Mary.
As long as there's nobody objecting in the office.
Yeah, I, yeah, I've done this before, and I did not have positive feedback, so...
It's not going to take long. I mean, that's the point.
It should be a very quick item.
Should be 10 minutes.
Oh, all right, you heard what Rob just said. All right, so...
It's longer than I would have thought.
Okay, five minutes.
I'm now, so we are now going to move to what in the agenda is item number seven, Town Code Amendment Application A-15-001, considering adoption...
Town Code Amendment Application A-15-001, Considering Adoption of Amendments to Chapter 29, Zoning Regulations of the Town Code, Providing a Streamline Permitting Process for Small Residential Rooftop Solar Systems. And our town attorney, Mr. Schultz, will be giving us...
May I make a motion?
I'll be, I'll be very brief for the public. In September 2004, the state passed a law that required local agencies to have an expedited permit processing for small residential rooftop solar energy systems. There were two changes that they made in the law, one to the Civil Code and one to the Government Code. The change in the Civic Code, Civil Code made a change in the definition of what a reasonable restriction is, that you can put on a solar energy system. The other change was to Government Code, Section 65850.5, which mandates that we have to pass an ordinance that would provide an expedited permitting and inspection process for small residential rooftop solar energy systems and impose a variety of requirements on local agencies. The good news is, is we've really already been complying with this law. We did a, we went back for the last year and found out we had 50 of these applications, and 47 of them had been passed within a three-day requirement. So we are getting those in and out as quickly as we can. We even have to, though, if they're over the counter, even do it the same day as what the law requires, and there's other restrictions that are in my staff report that we have to comply with. The ordinance I've done is the model ordinance. It's been passed in almost every single jurisdiction, either in the last three or four months or is being passed right at this exact same time. And so with that, the recommendation is to make the required findings at the Town Code. Amendments are consistent with the general plan and forward a recommendation to the Town Council for adoption of the amendments to the Town Code. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions? Sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. Hands and Talisfor, then, O'Donnell, that was the order I saw, hands.
I just had a question on page three at the top. It talked about the reasonable restrictions. The dollar amounts they're referencing there are for the permitting fees for a jurisdiction for a solar system? Is that correct? What is the...
The $1,000?
Yeah, what is the $1,000 referring to?
No, that's referring to a reasonable restriction, so you couldn't make changes to their solar energy proposal that they were trying to put in if it was going to increase it by $1,000 or more. That's what that requirement is for.
Okay, so it doesn't have to do with the permitting fees?
It doesn't have to do with permitting fees.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Two questions. One was, and these permits, it said somewhere in here that they would take place, or they would be fulfilled prior to anything else that came before? I mean, it said that these would, like, move to the top.
Yes, they really do move to the top.
And that is because?
State law says you have one day, if they're actually done by electronically submitted, you have the same, you have three days to do it if it's electronically, or, but if someone comes in over the counter, we'll have to take the building, we'll have to take the building department off of that and approve it that same day.
Okay, so do they, do they inspect the roof prior to any installation of these?
Not prior, but there is an inspection after.
After, okay. All right, that's it, thanks.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I have one question, and I just must have missed it, but on page two, the lower part of the page, it defines association and common interest development, and I can't find those terms used in the balance of the document. So it's nice to have a definition, but why?
It's a good question.
Well, if you find that it's not necessary, I would suggest you take it out.
Commissioner Badami?
Well, if there's no further discussion...
No, actually, we have a card. So if everyone's done with certain questions of staff, Angelina Dorner has a, has a few minutes to speak to us. Yeah, sorry. I was opening the public hearing for this item. Sorry.
Hello, I'm Angelia Dorner, a proud resident of the Almond Grove. I'd like to focus on the paragraph relating to historical properties. First off, I believe this is very simple. I believe the reference to the Community Development Director is misplaced. As written, it seems to relate to deeming a property historically significant, but I think if it's changed this way, it should relate to determining whether a certificate or a review is required. Either way, as owner of a small historical home, I read this ordinance to relate to all small residences except for historical residences. Now, I don't know what a certificate of appropriateness is. That definition should be added to the ordinance, but I do know what an architectural review could entail and could cost. Assembly Bill 2188 states that the reasonable restriction is one which does not increase the cost of the system by more than $1,000 or decrease the system efficiency by more than 10%. Let's consider the cost restriction. Think of the cost of an architectural review, appeal fees to go to the HPC, assuming the CDD says no, possible appeal fees to come to you and maybe even to the council. It's not hard to exceed $1,000. Aren't these costs really a cost of the system? Also, by the very nature of being historical, it's likely that you're going to be dealing with a lot of mature trees and limited options to achieve an effective rooftop system. It's not hard to imagine CDD requirements to exceed a 10% reduction of system efficiency. I just don't think these circumstances have been adequately vetted, and I think they should be before this ordinance goes to council. Otherwise, I think it's only partially addressing the spirit of the mandate and, more importantly, leaving everyone in a conundrum as it relates to small historical homes. I'd like to use my house as an example. I did my home in 87, 88, and as you can see, there's no change from the outside before and after, but when you open the front door...
You have to take the microphone with you when you move away.
It's a totally different story because of my skylights. I have no doubt that these skylights would never be approved under the current guidelines. I bring this up because, from the outside, my skylights look pretty much like solar panels. To comply with the spirit of legal mandate for historical homes, I think the town needs some specific guidelines to deal with the same questions raised during the 2020 general plan update. Something tangible for homeowners and staff to deal with competing values, economical and environmental improvements versus possible sacrifice of historical integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Thank you. I don't have any other cards, so I'm going to close the public portion and ask if anyone has any other questions of staff, Commissioner O'Donnell, and Commissioner Kane.
I'm just going to ask the council whether we have, as I was listening to that, it strikes me that we don't have the authority to do that. We're trying to follow the state law and...
The speaker brings up a very good point during my research. This was one of the sections that is in very few of the ordinances that I was able to find, but it was found in a few of them. I can't remember which ones. To keep this moving, I think what I'll do is have to, you know, I would still recommend approve it and move it on, but this can be one of the issues that's highlighted with council is how we can do it and if we have the ability to. My concern was still, there is some times in the historical district where I think, you know, you do need to have that extra set of eyes on it. I don't believe that situation would have caused any concern, but there might be somewhere that the visual and aesthetic issues might so overweight...
But how do you get that if it's a one-day turnaround?
Well, then, the code allows for that. If it's determined by the Community Development Director for that reason, then you can actually push that up to the use permit process.
So can I just understand, if we were to say we approve this subject, however, to the possible addition of the requested section unless you find that there is a legal prohibition?
Yes. Yes, something that definitely I will flush out further and make sure the council's aware of the concern from the speaker and making certain the Planning Commission is also aware of this issue and making certain that if we do have that ability, unless you don't want that issue to even be processed, I was trying to find, that was the only area where I was concerned about in the historical district, where I think you might need further review for that preservation of that area. If that's not a concern of Planning Commission, then certainly you can just strike it completely, and that's what many of the ordinances had, and that might be where we end up anyways.
Commissioner Kane, you had had your hand up.
Well, that was it. I think the speaker brought up an excellent point, and as appropriate, if we could put protective language for our historic districts, that'd be a very good idea.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed adoption as set forth in the report to us, and make the required finding that the Town Code amendments are consistent with the general plan, and forward a recommendation to the Town Council for adoption of the amendments to the Town Code, which is Exhibit 1, and include the language as suggested by the prior speaker and shown to us, subject, however, to the satisfaction of the town attorney, that there's no prohibition to that addition.
Commissioner Talisfor?
And I will second that motion and highlight the historical aspect of that, that it be forwarded to the Town Council. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other comments before we take a vote? All in favor? Aye, passes unanimously. So now we are going to move back to what was agendized to item number six, which is a public hearing to consider adoption of amendments to Chapter 2, Constraints Analysis and Site Selection, and Chapter 5, Architectural Design of the Hillside Development Standard and Guidelines. Mr. Paulson, I understand you're going to be providing us the report on this.
Yeah, I'll provide a brief report before you this evening. As directed by Town Council, staff has prepared some proposed amendments to the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines for two specific topic areas, the first being methodology for visibility analysis, and the second being the opportunity for future homeowners to use an LRV averaging option if the homes aren't visible as defined by the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines. Staff's pointed out specifically relating to the visibility methodology, some questions for the commission to consider. Dr. Weisman has also provided some other issues that the commission can definitely address, and above and beyond that, anything else that the commission has concerns about, we're here to answer questions, and this would be a recommendation to the Town Council. This is not the final deciding body, and so any recommendation could include additional direction, and that would get forwarded on to the, to the Town Council when appropriate.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Kane and Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, the obvious. What you provided, the sections you provided, for me, for me, they're fine, but the question really is, how do we proceed with respect to Dr. Weisman's letter? Do we ask you for a rewrite? Do we say which ones we want to rewrite or to include or not include? He brings up excellent points, and he puts more strength into the guidelines. How should we proceed on the presumption that we want to incorporate those stronger provisions?
If those are things that the commission is interested in adding, then that would be part of your direction to Town Council, is part of your recommendation, and whether it's all some, similar to the tree protection ordinance, I think you'll probably remember, Dr. Weisman had additional comments that weren't originally incorporated into the tree protection ordinance amendments, but many of those, the commission decided to forward on as part of their recommendation to the Town Council.
So depending upon our guidance, will you then consider adopting and putting into the form of the guidelines themselves, which would make it easier for Town Council to approve?
Those would be part of the amendments as the Planning Commission moves forward to the Town Council, so they would be receiving verbatim minutes, and then also staff would be outlining those proposed modifications to the Town Council from the Planning Commission.
So it'd be prepared that they do a go-no-go?
Correct.
That they don't have to, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I have two separate points. First is a question, I want to, first is a question which is relating to page two, where it says the following steps shall be taken in completing a view analysis, and if you move down about, I don't know, four maybe, it says, if determined necessary, three-dimensional illustrations, it isn't clear to me, determined by whom, and if you go down another, skip the next one and go to the other one, where they say, other locations as deemed appropriate by the deciding body may be chosen, it isn't clear to me when. So if I'm an applicant and I do what I think is the law, and I come in and you say, guess what, we're adding another viewing station, it seems sort of unfair, whereas if I file the application and you decide you want a different viewing station or an additional viewing station, and you tell me, that seems fair to me. Now, I don't know if it's practical, so my two questions on that are, as I've said, and then the separate point is, I think the comments raised are very, very good. On the other hand, I think they're worthy of some real consideration, and I don't know if this is the right time and, right time, certainly the right place, to do it, maybe it is, it's 10 o'clock, and I personally would like to really discuss these things because I, notwithstanding that I think there are a lot of very good suggestions, I don't necessarily think all of them are good suggestions, but maybe I'm wrong. So I will throw out the question to my fellow commissioners, really, as to whether we should set up a special time to consider these things and have a discussion of them, or whether we should do it tonight. But before we get to that, I would like to have a question on those two paragraphs that I asked you about.
Sure, those are both, both great points. The determination would be made by the Community Development Director, so we can add that clarification in there. And secondly, with the viewing platforms, alternative locations, the existing guidelines actually provide for that opportunity, so staff would be looking on a case-by-case basis. When an application comes in, we would go out to the platforms, look for visibility, you know, if there's something which came up with some recent projects where if you move one way or the other, then you, you know, some distance, then you have visibility. So those are the determinations that staff would be making in conjunction with the Community Development Director.
Well, let me make sure I understand that. So if I have a project and I go out and do whatever I do, and then you look at it and you say, you know, I, well, like, one of the things is, all I can see is the Chevron sign, and say, would you go out and go 150 feet down? Is that the way it would happen?
That is the way it would happen.
It's possible that a person would have done what they thought was what you required, but that person would be also aware that if it's crystal clear, that's probably, that's going to end, but perhaps if it's not crystal clear, you may ask for, I don't know whether you can ask for more than one or certainly an additional viewing platform.
That's, that's correct.
And to that point, if it would be clearer, instead of it being determined by the deciding body in note with the first star, that could also be clarified to be as deemed appropriate by the Community Development Director, so you don't have to wait till you're before a deciding body and then you have to head back out to the field.
I think that that's an excellent suggestion, yes. Commissioner Talisfor?
Yeah, by the way, I think that sounds better, and I, a question for that is, when do the story polls go up in the Hillside? Is it, I mean, is, does the staff then, if this is additional viewing platform would be decided by the Community Development Director, with the 10 days before, I think it's 10 days before, does that give staff or, you know, the director enough time to say, oh, we need to, this isn't going to work?
So when story polls go up depends, when a view analysis is necessary, then they would go up much earlier than a hearing because we would have to do that analysis prior to even setting a hearing.
Yep, thank you. I wanted to know that, clarify that. So to Commissioner O'Donnell's point about this discussion, I think this could be a very rich and deep discussion. I think we could spend an hour just on visibility. I think we could spend another hour on color or then the LRV averaging. I would like to suggest that we maybe set aside a special meeting.
I agree, but we do have people that have come to speak.
But, wait a minute, I'm not finished. Right, I'm not finished. But tonight, I think we could use our time wisely, perhaps by asking any questions we have prior to that next meeting and listening to speakers and entertaining that. That's what I would put forward.
So I, I'm going to strongly suggest that we have our speakers come in front of us that way, because I do believe we're going to have quite a few questions for our speakers. Following the speakers, I would like to then reevaluate with the commission timing and if we do want to continue it for a special meeting. Yes?
Let me just ask this question. It strikes me that, for example, if I'm out there and I want to speak, at the end of the day, we're going to continue it for a study session. I guess if I'm a speaker, I'd rather speak at the study session than speak now because, for example, on the comments that we have, they have raised questions in my mind, but if the speaker doesn't know what those questions are, it makes it difficult. If, on the other hand, we're at a study session and we really go over all this stuff and somebody then has an opportunity to respond, perhaps it would be clearer.
So could staff clarify that? If we, we could have speakers speak to... So could staff clarify that? If we could have speakers speak tonight, but we could also have them speak at the study session?
Correct. They would be speaking at both hearings.
So, no, unfortunately, not from, not, unfortunately, you can't. We can't, sorry. My lawyer will get very upset at me if I do that. He, so, because I do know these, you know, they've sat here all evening. So I'm going to open the public portion. I'm going to listen to the speakers, and then let's discuss it. That also gives the speakers, as they come up, since they've heard this dialogue, they can weigh in on it as they come in and speak to us about coming to the study session. So, that being said, I'm opening the public portion of this item, and I'm going to call up Steve Abs. Five minutes, correct? Five or 10? Five. Three. So you have three minutes?
Good evening. I'm Steve Abs with David on Homes. As Mr. Weisman pointed out a month or so ago in a PC hearing, the Hillside Development Standard and Guidelines are a balance of property rights and the goals and interests of the citizens of those scatos. The Hillside Development Standard and Guidelines, it's a document that's put a lot of effort into it, the town has. We find it tough, but we find it fair and workable as it exists today. We do find it a little unfair that, you know, the rules are kind of changing as we're close to getting these applications approved. But I think it's important that any amendments that are being done to the Hillside Development Guidelines keep that fairness, that balance of fairness. I think what Mr. Weisman's proposing has a lot of unfairness as regard to property rights. I do support the fact that if we go to a study session, I think, I think, you know, Davidon being probably one of the most experienced in the visual analysis side of things, we've probably done more visual analysis in the history of this town. I think we have a lot of valuable experience, and I think we would definitely be interested in providing some insight as respect to that. We also think that if there is a study session, I think that the town arborist should have some say in this thing. You know, I think, again, what Mr. Weisman's coming up with is, there's a lot of things that we don't agree with, and I think both sides definitely need to be heard on this. When this was brought to town council, they specifically, this is the only reason we're here, is because town council sent this to staff. Staff was to get specific clarification on the methodology regarding two things, the viewing platform, then also they had some confusion on existing trees, what trees were going to be removed, and what trees were going to be impacted by construction. Wanted to make sure that those were not part of the screening of the visual analysis. Those were basically the two confused items that council sent this back to staff for clarification. I do want to quickly say that it is important that the commission keeps in mind that this visual analysis is supposed to be taken from the naked eye, standing on a viewing platform. You know, the level of detail that Mr. Weisman speaks of trying to define twigs, and leaves, and dead branches from, you know, 1.5 miles away is just not practical in this situation. So I support what staff has recommended for the methodology. I believe it's pretty much, it has, it is what we have been doing. But again, we would like to offer our insight through this process in making sure that these guidelines get amended properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? No? All right. Our next speaker is Jeff Thayer.
Steve made some good comments. I'm Jeff Thayer with David on Homes, and we do feel like we're on a little bit of quicksand here after 14 approvals in a row, and we think we've done a great job up there. But we welcome the opportunity to have, and my question is, are we going to be able to have an actual discussion here, or are we going to have to go in three-minute increments, or how is that going to work in a study session?
So I guess I can respond to that, correct? I'd rather...
Typically, it is in three-minute increments.
In a study session too?
Yes.
Because we can't get, we just can't have an analysis.
Unless, of course, people have questions. So...
Well, we can, let us work with our town attorney to figure out a methodology, because I'm sure you're not the only one who would like to have more of a dialogue with the commission. I think our challenge is, how do we balance the dialogue opportunity with also the deliberation opportunity? So we'll work with our town attorney. Thank you.
Yes. Question?
I would just like to comment that we always welcome written correspondence.
Which you will get, but, you know, when you set your date and all that. I did have a little brain teaser for you, and don't want to get Joel mad at me, but as I look down at the bullet points, it says a visible home is defined as a single-family residence where 25% or more of an elevation can be seen from the town's established viewing platforms. And then I'm starting to think, well, if, and then down at the bottom, there's a little three-star asterisk to that, and it says percentages shall be rounded to the nearest whole number. So if our calculation shows exactly 24.5, do you round down? Do you round up? If you round up, we're out of compliance. If you round down, we're in. If it's 25.01, or 24.01, we're out of compliance. So, you know what I'm saying? And that was just really kind of tongue-in-cheek, but it's kind of an example of when we're going into these things, what we, I'm sure that was meant to be a simplification, but in fact, it's something subject to abuse. And if we don't get this kind of alteration of the rules correct and fair, you're going to create a situation that is far more complicated, you know, in the future than it is today. So...
Thank you. Any questions? No? Dr. Weisman?
One question.
Okay. Yes.
Isn't it rounding to, anywhere up to 25, let's say 24.4, you round down. 25.5, you round up. I mean, I, that's what I learned in grammar school, so I don't know.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The point is excellent, and maybe the language could be rewritten to 24.5 or more. What else do you want to round? You don't want to round 19.215. You just want to know whether you got 25.
Yes, and I think that that's a...
So change the 25 to 24.5.
Point that we will add in. All right. Next speaker.
Dave Weisman, Francis Hoakes. I trust that all commissioners have had the opportunity to read my Exhibit 4 letter of September 15th. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have in reference to that letter. But first, I would like to quote, for emphasis, one particularly important and relevant section of the Hillside Standards, as you consider what items you may want to add to the staff draft. On page 13 of the Hillside Standards, it says, and I quote, "Potential," as it relates to visibility, "is defined as capable of being seen from a viewing platform if trees or large shrubs are removed, significantly pruned, or impacted by construction." End of quote. These items are already included in the Hillside Standards, and you have been asked by the town council to consider incorporating these and other potential areas discussed by the town council at their May 2015 meeting. And there were many more issues discussed than the two that Mr. Abs just referenced. While some of these issues have subjective components, we can provide better guidance for staff and developers that are consistent with the goals of the Hillside Standards. And one of the reasons the rounding off was employed, because these are some subjective things. As the hour is already late, may I suggest a possible action so that you don't have to wordsmith this document tonight. I propose that should you have, that should you find merit in some or all of the eight categories that I have discussed in my letter, four of which are listed on Page 3 of the staff report, that you select those items and direct staff to work with me on specific language to codify these. Staff and I did a similar, successful collaboration on the recent tree protection ordinance revision, and I see no reason why we couldn't have a revised draft for the planning commission, for the next planning commission meeting. I think this should come back to the planning commission before going to the town council. I first brought up these issues on May 19th, 2015. I've offered to work with Davidon on some of them, and we haven't gotten anywhere. And Mr. Abs expressed concern about the fact that dead twigs, I talked about removing dead twigs and so forth. Well, in fact, those dead twigs have been used in the visibility analysis done by Davidon's architect to count as screening. Davidon has also put forth the issue of fire control. Well, it says in the Hillside Standards that one issue of fire control is to remove dead twigs.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any questions? No? All right. And our last speaker is Michael Keeney.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the commission. My name is Michael Keeney. I am with Summerhill Homes, and I am the project manager for the project that we currently have under construction at the Sisters of the Holy Name site up on Prospect Road. We've been under construction for most of this year. We're finishing up the site improvements here in the next month or two, and we expect to start construction on the first home in October, next month. We are supportive of the proposed amendments to Section 1.2 of Chapter 5 to allow LRV averaging for non-visible homes that staff is proposing, and ask that you make a recommendation to the town council to adopt this revision. We are aware of the fact that there is another piece of this that is more complicated with the view corridor analysis, and our project is not subject to that requirement. So, and I'm sure there are other projects besides ours that are not. The LRV averaging was part of the Davidon project. I believe you reviewed it at that time and thought that it was a good alternative for projects that were not visible from the viewing platforms, and council made the same, had the same opinion, and recommended that that amendment be adopted for all projects that could qualify for it. I think there's a consensus around this as an improvement to the guidelines, and as a project that's currently under construction, we would like the benefit of that improved guideline, really, as soon as possible. We're going to be starting construction, and it seems silly not to implement something that everyone agrees is an improvement. So while it may take a while to address the view analysis issue, I would hope that there might be an opportunity to move forward the LRV averaging. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? No? All right. Thank you. I don't have any other cards, so I am going to close the public portion of this discussion. I do want to bring up, I do think the last speaker had a good point, so I'd like to ask my commissioners, I think a lot of our concerns do come from the view, and do we also want study session to include the averaging, or how do we feel about the color averaging? Do we want to break those apart, keep them together? I just want to get everybody's feel for that. Commissioner Tausford?
Absolutely. We need to spend time with color averaging. Absolutely. And it should be included in the, you know, the meeting.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I wanted to respond to the suggestion that we do some drafting before we have the meeting, and personally, I would find that to be either counterproductive or unfair. We're all saying we need some time to educate ourselves, and to hear, not only from staff, which is very helpful, but perhaps hear some conflicting views, and to take our time and to think about it. If we were to now say to staff, you know, grab this one, that one, this one, we would have, personally, I would not feel well enough armed to do that, and that's the whole purpose of the study session. So I don't see how we can say, go ahead and start drafting some things before we consider what we're doing, and maybe that will help us. Because then that means, well, maybe Davidon or somebody else should be doing their counter-proposal drafts. Just, to me, it seems a waste of time.
Okay. Any other comments? So do we want to set a study session to dive into this and set a date? All right.
It doesn't have to be a Wednesday, right? I mean, I would entertain another day.
I think as long as we agree, it's...
Okay.
Wednesday is preferred. But it does not have to be a planning commission night, right? I mean, we could do a different Wednesday. So if you're looking at just the planning commission dates, I don't think that we're tied to those. What date is it right now? It's the 23rd.
So there's a number of options. I mean, if we're going to go into a study session, we can start planning commission early, do the study session before, which is one option. We can do it on an alternative. Moving forward, just to get the study session going, if we're not going to go through and hear initial comments, then we can probably do something maybe as early as the 21st on an off-planning commission night, or the 28th, if we want to do it before a planning commissioner, just two suggestions.
Looking at October?
Correct.
We have to wait that long?
But I think we can look at the 7th or the 14th. It's, you know, whatever the planning commission is interested, we can start that study session. We have to make sure that any additional information, we're going to prepare. We have time to do that. The 21st, 28th, any of the, probably Wednesdays in October.
I believe October 7th. This is reserved for the victim services unit.
Perfect. So 14th, 21st, or 28th?
7th.
No, it's involved.
I was going to say what...
Maybe at 4:00, certain points.
Great, great point. So that would be, that would take the 28th off?
14th.
14th or 21st?
Before the planning commission, yeah.
Well, then, that's right. The 14th, we have conceptual development advisory committee. So we're looking at the 21st.
Right. Yep. Commissioner Hanson?
I know we've set the first date for the planned development ordinance, and that's next Wednesday.
That's September 30th.
No other meetings have been set yet, so that's not going to be an issue.
Correct. We can work around that.
All right. 21st of October.
At what time?
We'd probably start a study session at 6:00, or we can start it at 7:00 if that works better for commissioners' schedules.
Earlier, at 6:00 is fine. Everyone's looking at me because I can do it in a lot...
6:00, wait a minute. Study session at 6:00 on the same night as a...
No, it'd be the 21st.
Oh, dear. Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, no.
As a heads up, I may not be able to make that.
The day or the time?
The time. Yeah. But go ahead and plan accordingly.
Well, what's time better?
I'm just one person.
What time is better for you?
It would have to be a different date, or even earlier, if it was maybe 4:30, or out here by 6:00.
Well, you guys, I mean, you get out earlier anyway.
I don't think an hour and a half's going to do it.
But you could be here for most of it.
Yes.
I was going to say, maybe we should put a, not only beginning, but an end. But personally, I think two hours is...
I would, let's slate it for two hours.
Right.
So what if we did, can we do, well, we need to know about staff's day, too.
Right.
Of course. With that much notice, I know I can do it. I can leave early, but what about you guys?
Yeah.
So let's do it on the 21st for now. That's where we're slated, 4 to 6.
4 to 6?
Yep.
And so we'll also, tomorrow, check availability, make sure there's no other conflicting meetings here that evening, and then if there are, then we will poll commissioners for alternative dates, and then make sure that we inform the public through what's new, and then obviously the speakers that are here tonight will inform them directly.
So a point was brought up as part of the study session. Could we bring the town arborist in on this, too?
Definitely.
Okay. I think having multiple viewpoints would be very beneficial. Okay?
Does anyone have any other comments for that? Okay. All right. We will continue that to the 21st at 4:00. Yes?
Can we try to see if there's...
I'd have to open up the public portion to do that. I'm going to let staff coordinate that and let us know.
Would have...
Yeah, it's not that we would have, probably, we've seen a bunch of people go, mm. Okay. So we're going to move on to other business, then. Do we have a report?
I thought we were going to use some of this time to ask additional questions. No?
I thought we just decided we were not going to do that, that we were going to table the conversation until that point.
Oh, I did not hear that. Okay. Sorry.
Yep.
And it would be helpful if we continue this to that date certain.
Oh, yeah. So I'll make a motion to continue this item to October 21st at 4:00 for a study session. Do you have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. I assume there's no appeal on that, so. Now I'm going to move on to other business. Ms. Pravetti?
Thank you. On September 15th, the council met, but they did not have any planning or land use items. However, I do want to announce that the council is appointing a new ad hoc citizen committee to consider the potential for ballot measures that might be considered by our voters to increase revenue and have a dedicated revenue source for capital improvements. There are a couple items that council is suggesting. We're looking for three residents to volunteer for this committee. Applications are available with our clerk's office and it's a very quick recruitment, so if people are interested, now is the time to apply. Applications close on October 9th. And then secondly, we are also open for our more general boards and commissions recruitment. Those applications are due in December. We do have a couple of terms ending on the Planning Commission. Certainly, members of the commission are eligible to reapply. However, if there are new voices who are interested in participating, there are other seats also available, not only with Planning Commission, but other boards and commissions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other commission matters? Commissioner Hanson?
I just had a question for Ms. Pravetti. On the, I had seen the announcement about the ad hoc committee and it's like a typical commission, I mean, thinking of other people that might be interested, that if you're already serving on a commission.
That's right.
In some capacity, you're not eligible to apply for that.
That's correct. Okay, good clarification. Do we have any other commission matters? If not, meeting's adjourned.